Go ahead.
On the meeting, on order of meeting of the planning commission for our number twelve.
Thank you. I'm Pete Rayner, vice chair of the commission, filling in for our chair, Stephen Poll. I asked my fellow commissioners to introduce themselves, starting to my far right.
Alan Nolan.
Logan Camporielli.
Clyde Hossi.
Thank you. The public may participate in person or remotely utilizing web and telephone conference links. Individuals are limited to one three-minute comment period during the meeting. Please keep your comments specific to the current agenda item. Chat is not supported. We will start with a chance for the public to address the commission on any subject not on today's agenda. Do we have any speakers that want to speak at this time on either online or here?
Nobody online.
Nobody online. Thank you. Our first item today is a public hearing on proposed chapter twenty twenty-three capital facilities plan and chapter seven amendments. Mr. Chesney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We, we still are waiting for Ms. Whitstruck, but we do have a quorum. We're going to go through a fairly complicated agenda, as you've seen before, starting with the capital facilities plan. And as we move through, we will do capital facilities plan and comp plan chapter seven for an overview for yourselves and the audience, and then we will allow for public testimony and then deliberations. As with the comprehensive plan amendments that are coming up a little bit later, we're going to go individually on those so that we can have a presentation, a discussion, public comment, and then deliberation and action by the commission on each of them as we go forward. And then at the end is a wrap-up on a, what's called the concurrency analysis. So comp plan amendments overview, GMA allows for communities to amend their comprehensive plan annually as long as they consider the collective impact of all the amendments and do the action as a single action. The, our package this year includes another CFP amendment. As you saw, last year, we had a CFP process to move forward. This part of that process, we'll get into it a little bit, but it's one of the last pieces to correct or cure the twenty seventeen, twenty twenty CFP moving forward. And then we had eight new amendments and two from prior years to consider. Here's our calendar for the year, starting in December, when the deadline closed for CPA applications. You can see where we reside down at the bottom of the list after a full year's effort. This is your public hearing and recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The added piece in here for the steering committee is specifically related to CPA seventeen because that involves a change in the urban growth area. The CFP is added for these reasons chiefly to augment the levels of service, notably for general facilities, and also to better balance the six and twenty-year cost and expenditures, or we call them the sources and uses table. The challenge that Spokane County has had in the past is the CFP element, or chapter seven, was done with an eye toward growth and development, and yet other capital expenses that were categorized in the county's capital improvement program were not integrated in the CFP. Well, under GMA, they have to be integrated in the overall CFP and may made part of the comprehensive plan and go through the comprehensive plan amendment cycle and process, which comes through you. We have added those elements to this company or this CFP, and staff has done tremendous work to to gather that from more than a handful of other departments that all have their own accounting systems and display systems and getting that into the document that was posted for you on the web about three weeks ago. The other part of CFP that you remember from last year is for the special districts. Those are places that the county does not control, but we partner with to better understand growth and also to give them a heads-up for growth. The single biggest change from last year is working with King County. Spokane County was able to add language into the Growth Management Act amendments, which were done under the climate change bill that says if the county works in a good faith effort with those special districts and can't balance the fact that we do this under GMA rules and none of them are required to work under GMA rules. If we work in a good faith effort, if they're not responsive, or if they choose to work in a different direction, the county is no longer held accountable for that in our own compliance. So we, we've made good progress with them. Through this past year, we've built good partnerships with these. So you know, here's the kind of the Band-Aid for this version, but as we go forward into twenty-six planning, we're building some really good relationships with them. And this is kind of a summary. There's a six and a twenty-year version of this. You can see that in every case, the county is using less revenue than is available. That, of course, is the key to doing this. It shows we can afford these options. Some of them you'll see are actually quite low because the, the revenue totals are, that's a gross revenue total. So within that is capital facilities, but also operations and maintenance, maintenance of those capital facilities and other factors. So some of them look a little odd in that way. Here's the twenty-year version again. Some of them here because they're budgeted a little more further out and makes them a little more speculative. You know, transportation, stormwater are both really balanced pretty closely, which is what we need to do. Then in chapter seven, what we're doing is essentially adjusting the comp plan amendment to now fit the language of the comprehensive plan more directly. So it doesn't stand out separately from the CFP. So that's, this is, this is almost a text amendment, very similar to what you saw last year. But it is part of that alignment to make sure that the comp plan, the CFP, and these other documents are all coordinated. And having that coordinated comprehensive plan is what is what's required under GMA compliance. A few comments. Futurewise has reviewed this and has, well, you can see here, they're recommending adoption. They have no objections to the CFP chapter seven as it was presented to them. And we also heard from the Neighborhood Alliance, which also provided support for your action to recommend approval of this to the county board. Let me pause for just a second. And Scott Kuta from Commerce is here, and he's going to make a quick comment on Commerce's perspective. And Scott's been involved as a partner with us, not simply as a reviewing agency. And it's been really helpful for the county to have that participation.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chesney, and appreciate the time to address the planning commission. My name is Scott Cookta. I'm a senior planner with the Washington State Department of Commerce, and my role is to provide technical planning assistance to Spokane County and a couple of counties in eastern Washington. I've been doing this for quite a long time as I worked for the county when Mr. Hossi was on planning commission quite some time ago. So I, I'd like to echo what Mr. Chesney said about the collaboration. We really appreciate the the effort to bring us in and early and to help, help get this document to where it's at today. And also, Ms. Pilgrim has been really important in this process as well. So the county's required to submit any draft documents to Commerce for sixty-day notice, and my responsibility is to review that under the, you know, the requirements of the Growth Management Act and to identify areas of deficiency. Couple days ago, we, well, more than a couple days ago, it came down and talked about a few remaining issues that we had with the, with the document. Specifically Appendix A, we wanted to see the totals more clearly identified. So you can clearly see that the expenditures did not exceed the revenues. So the staff worked on putting those charts together, and it is very clear that, that you can see that the expenditures, planned expenditures do not exceed the revenue projections. So we were happy to see that. And also the chart that you saw, the summary table we've been asking for, that really gives a big picture of all of the facilities required over the next six and twenty years. And that gives the county a really good idea how much it's going to cost for, for planned facilities. So I didn't have time to prepare a final letter, so I'll be submitting that later in the next couple of days where there's a planning conference going on. I got to run back to here. So took some time out to come over here to do, to address the planning commission. As we move forward, the, there's a big update required in twenty twenty-six called the periodic update, where the comprehensive plan development regulations or critical areas are all required to be updated, including a new look at, you know, growth patterns, urban growth boundaries. We would encourage the county to look at, take this opportunity to do more detailed analysis on facilities required for growth areas, and you could sub, you know, subdivide the county into subareas, look at specific growth needs for, for urban growth boundaries if there's proposed expansions, for example. One of the big, important parts of that is that if you are ever looking at identifying impact fees, for example, you have to, you can only use impact fees for new growth, the, the costs of new growth. You cannot use impact fees to take care of past deficiencies. So you have to be able to identify new CFP. What are the costs of new growth? That is one example and one, one really, you know, necessity to include in your capital facilities plan. Finally, I would encourage the county not to look at the CFP as an annoying Growth Management Act requirement. Some people look at it that way, but it can be a very useful tool to, to set your priorities for funding and to inform your budget as you move forward on an annual basis. And in fact, some counties their chief financial officer is in charge of the capital facilities plan. They place that much importance on it, and they, they are in charge of it in collaboration with the planning department. So that's something that you might think about down, down the road. So with that, I have any, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions?
I have a question, just for general knowledge. What is the percentage of growth that you're looking at per year, or what have you allowed so that we can plan for the future? Are we looking at another three to five? I mean, I have no idea.
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. We're looking at potentially the median OFM population projection, which is fifty thousand or so in the next twenty years. That process is ongoing right now, and we'll be bringing that, that information forward.
That'll all fit right into this program that we're at.
In the next two years, you'll be seeing a lot of information.
Okay, I was just ahead of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate your time. And, you know, just to kind of reiterate that, we are making this an integral part of the comprehensive plan going forward because it does inform growth on where, where you can, or what it's going to cost to grow in particular areas. Scott mentioned the geographic alignment. That's also something different. Spokane County hasn't done that in the past. We've simply considered the UGA as a whole, which makes some of this more of a mathematical exercise. Now we're going to add a geography label or geography filter on top of that, so we'll be able to look at specific urban growth areas and calculate more directly how those capital facilities will go forward. Mr. Chair, that's all we have for this. We would welcome you opening a public hearing and taking comment.
Before we open the public, are any questions from the commission of Mr. Chesney? Without objection, I will open the meeting to the public comments. Do we have any speakers to address the?
May I check online? One second.
Commissioner Rayner, the only person that was signed up for the CFP was Scott Kuta to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good morning, everyone. Do you hear my voice or just?
We do, we do.
Okay. Well, I'm a little bit froggy this morning because I have a cold, thus I'm not there. So I just wanted to reiterate the comments that the Neighborhood Alliance made. This is an excellent result, worthy of your recommendation to the, to the board. And personally, I, I expressed in our letter, or when I transmitted the letter, to compliment everyone involved in getting this put together and put to bed. It's a significant piece, perhaps the most significant piece aside from the adjustments to the UGA itself that, that resulted from the settlement agreement. This is a big piece, and so on behalf of the Neighborhood Alliance as well as myself, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cropp.
My name is Paul Crop. I reside at three, three, one, one, east. I reside at three, three, one, one East Donora Court, nine, nine, two, two, three. And I'm speaking both for the Neighborhood Alliance as well as myself. And want to make sure that I am uh, entered in the party of record list. Thank you.
Paul, you, you're, you are safely on our list.
Thank you.
I would be more worried if Paul wasn't here in some way, so.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission? Anyone else? If not, um, without objection, I close the public hearing and look to our commissioners for questions and comments.
Yeah, I guess I'll just echo the same thanks that Paul gave. And um, it's, obviously this was a lot of work and I like to see the collaboration. It's great to see um, a sometimes critic of the county, Futurewise, giving big compliments to the county. And so that felt good.
Any other questions or comments from the planning commission? If not, I'll ask for a motion that we uh.
Mr. Chairman, we have a suggested language up here if you're interested.
You want to take us through that?
Oh. Uh, the motion could be move to recommend the Board of County Commissioners amend the capital facilities plan and comprehensive plan, chapter seven, as presented by staff.
And I'll second it.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, uh, take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay, and, and I vote, so the, the motion passes four, zero, and one abstention. And I want to make a comment too. I did ask the staff, and I appreciate them preparing motions because there are parts of these things that we're going to vote on that have a lot of tails to them. And I was hoping to avoid any controversy for everybody. If our motion doesn't dot every i and cross every t, so thank you to the staff for making those. Thank you. That motion, by the way, we've been requested to adjust our order to accommodate the largest percentage of what is apparently our attendance today and move on to uh, item twelve.
Mr. Chair, I've got some introductory parts of the CPA and then we could go on to twelve.
Okay, perfect.
Won't be too long. Uh, you can see the general universe of comp plan amendments that were introduced this year uh, in most of our typical areas, uh, the West Plains, the north part of the city and some in the uh, city of the valley. Uh, these are the ten amendments, eight are new, and you can see the two at the top. From uh, twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-two, those were either remanded or continued. Uh, and then the others, uh, number, number five is in the North Metro, six in the Valley, seven, eight in the West Plains, um, eleven and twelve on the North Side, Hastings, Farwell and North Metro. Fifteen, we're going to talk about uh, separately, that was a staff initiated amendment. And then seventeen, which is the urban growth area correction uh, as a potential cure to our settlement agreement. As the warrant, these are the criteria in the code for amendment. And while these are specific to zoning, uh, because the system we use, when you make a comprehensive plan, you, in, in almost every case, you make a concurrent zoning change. And so these were left as the overall criteria by which every amendment is adopted. Uh, the uh, first two are pretty straightforward, uh, some technical parts. And then uh, number six is one that generally kind of gets filled in at the end. If, if you make a determination in favor of these as a statement of public value or public interest and the board as well. Our SEPA in uh, efforts, um, you can see here the various dates. Comments were on eleventh and they went out in a comment period. Uh, proposals issued on the twenty ninth and the comment period ending tomorrow for those. Now, what's really most important is we wanted to give you a summary or at least talk about it uh, upfront rather than at the end. Uh, this will be the final uh, motion that we ask of you. But we wanted to show you upfront a, a couple of examples from the cumulative impact assessment that we did this year. This was done as, as a separate chapter, uh, not just as a table of new residents, this many gallons of water, new residents, this much uh, student. We broke it down by specific areas. We broke it down by levels of service and capacity. And, and we wanted to be able to show, do we have a surplus? Do we have a deficit? And so we've got two examples just here on the presentation. This is in something called the Cumulative Impact Chapter. Again, posted uh, on our web for uh, review. Uh, what you can see here in terms of wastewater. And we broke these out by facilities as well. Each comp plan drains to a particular facility. And so what you can see is uh, the, you know, levels of assumption, uh, the potential change uh, in here. And then the impacts. And the bottom line shows you that uh, the combined impact is about eighteen point eight million gallons. Our new intake is about thirteen two, which leaves a, a reserve of five point six. You know, that's a, that's a healthy reserve. Uh, and as a kind of a note, the city treatment plant has a share of its capacity, you know, hate to say owned by the county, but we pay for that capacity as well as the county's own treatment facility, which is also modular in construction. And as growth comes along, again, back to CFP planning, when you can anticipate some of these costs, that can grow in four million gallon day modules. So that was designed to grow in a very cost effective manner. Next example is the, the special districts and notably the schools. Uh, we always get concerns about schools capacities, can they handle things? And then again, they've become very good partners for us uh, in moving things along. So you can see uh, here a potential student changes by school district. And then the capacity is here. And what you can see very clearly is Central Valley uh, has capacity, Mead has capacity. Genie with these projections shows a deficit. Uh, this is a, this is not a fatal flaw at this stage. But what it shows is what we did last year to make schools more of a direct concurrency means that this, that, that has to be solved or cured in some way before building permits can be issued in those comp plan areas that affect the Genie School District. And so that, that better directly links. Doesn't mean they have to build a new school. You know, the schools use modular units, they change classroom capacities. But what it's saying is what they've told us is this has to be addressed before those permits come in. And it's kind of the first time we've taken an active look at it upfront. So uh, at this point, I would suggest we shift to CPA twelve. And I will move that up. And I'd ask everybody in the audience to just not look at the screen for a minute. Because because it'll make you crazy. Okay. Here's uh, proposed amendment twelve. You can see it's, it's on North, North Mill Road. So I have to get my own notes up to consider it. In a single family area, proposed for medium density residential change. And uh, the project is outlined on the screen. You can see on the side, uh, access, it's in Whitworth Water, Spokane County wastewater, Mead Schools and Fire District Nine. This is an aerial of the area. Uh, you can see again, it's, it's uh, residential in, on all sides. Those uh, filters on eligibility, uh, this project meets the first two. Uh, and so it, it, it passes that hurdle to be considered. The multifamily goals are important for all of these. Uh, this is the standards we've set for ourselves uh, to do this. And they, they talk about good access, they talk about nearness to commercial, to open space, uh, near uh, connections to that. And so we can see here that it has good access to arterials. It's less than a mile from a mixed use urban activity center. Uh, we've noted here that STA does not currently provide transit service here, which is desirable for uh, multifamily, even, even the medium density side. And it's about a half mile from Mead High School Athletic Fields. Not technically a park, but in the broadest sense of being accessible to open space, uh, it, it is there. The SEPA conditions were pretty minimal. It was just to review any prior archaeological activity on the site and report that back. And then uh, other elements that we check off to make sure we have met our uh, GMA standards. Uh, was it given public notice? And you can see here, we, as we've done since last year, we post our reports twenty-one days in advance. We send out the legal notices fifteen days in advance. Property owners in the immediate vicinity are notified and the signs are posted on the site. Uh, is the otherwise consistent with the comprehensive plan? Uh, it, you can see, I guess, one of the things, if we wanted to go back for a second. I see, yeah. It talks about putting multifam, or, there we go, that was one, one too far. We'll get there. Uh, is there a taking, a regulatory taking? No, these are, these are property owner requested amendments and therefore uh, there's not a governmental taking of that. Uh, this supports the current level of service for all the elements. And one of the questions in your final determination is, does it in fact concur with the SEPA determination? So these are comments from the public. And I'll, I'll go through these and then, then the audience here can augment them. Uh, too much increase in density. These are the uh, points from the comprehensive plan uh, for Spokane County. And you can see two of them. The first one, A, integrate into or next to neighborhood, community or urban activity centers. Uh, this is within a mile or so of that. And the other one is integrate into small scattered parcels throughout existing residential areas. Uh, so it, it clearly meets that criteria. And then uh, should be built to a scale and design of community and development. Uh, we'll, we'll touch on that later. But one of the, one of the real challenges that neighbors feel in these areas is this is going to be out of character, it's, it's going to be too much density. It's going to be, you know, things that are going to be uh, detrimental to our quality of life. A lot of that is ameliorated by design issues that, that ask projects, in this case, medium density, not high density, to respond to those neighborhood issues and try to build structures or to build structures that are compatible and have character that fits into a neighborhood, even though it is changing the densities. Uh, Mead Schools commented, identified no shortfalls. Uh, common uh, concern that's a decreased property value. There really is no uh, universal research that shows that. Can it happen in certain areas, of course? Uh, but again, back to that whole design idea, projects that are well designed to be compatible, um, generally at worst have a neutral impact on property values. And in some cases can, can benefit because they bring new energy and value into an otherwise vacant lot. Wildlife concerns, uh, we did not identify any specific habitats. Uh, tree removal, we may, sometimes you have to say it's, it's, it's not our issue at the moment, but tree removal is not necessarily a zoning criteria. And then traffic volumes. Uh, both DOT and, and our transportation engineers analyzed the volume and didn't identify any deficiencies to the level of service. So here's the summary map again. You can see the single family or the low density residential surrounding this, that, that uh, mixed use area probably peeking up to the bottom, but that's really not the issue. And the context of that, and we would be happy to uh, defer to the public if you wouldn't choose to open a public hearing.
Before we open the public hearing, is there any questions of the commission for Mr. Chesney? Seeing none, uh, I'd like to open the public hearing. First speaker would be Ben Goodmanson, the representative of the applicant. Sorry.
Uh, no, they are not. And the difference being the SEM versus the SON. Thank you for this uh, opportunity, Ben Goodmanson, Whipple Consulting Engineers, twenty-one South Pines Road, Spokane Valley, Washington. Thank you for hearing me this today, uh, Mr. Commissioners. Um, I have prepared a letter and that has been submitted to you. Um, I also have a quick, short presentation to supplement uh, Mr. Chesney's presentation. Um, wanted to show this map here. Um, it gives a little bit better understanding of where this property is located and all the amenities around it from the Little Spokane River and that natural area. The Mead High School that Mr. Chesney referred to, the STA Park and Ride here at Division and Hastings Road, the Fred Meyer Shopping Center, the Wannamere Shopping Center, um, as well as the connection to the Children of the Sun Trail, which connects to Wash, uh, Wash Dot Right Away and uh, leads down the North South Freeway. Um, or, and then of course, the North Sp- North South uh, Freeway. And then Wannamere Golf Course. All these amenities, all of these amenities are uh, in close proximity to the project. Um, with Mill Road being in urban arterial and having its connections to Hastings Road as well as to Wannamere Road. Um, we have completed the trip generation distribution letter for this project uh, that has been reviewed by Wash Dot as well as Spokane County. Um, we have provided a comparison or understanding of what the difference would be under uh, highest and best use for the development and what that trip generation would be in anticipation. When we uh, get to an actual project and uh, make our application for that, we will repeat this process uh, for trip generation and traffic and currency and uh, be re-reviewed at that time. Mr. Chesney did a really good job of explaining a lot of the comprehensive goals. And so I didn't really want to hard go over that too much, but I did want to mention those. Those are also included within the documentation that you have. Wanted to really emphasize uh, why we are choosing this site. This site has some topography issues with it. Um, while it is located on Mill Road, uh, it has at the backside of the property quite a bit of slope. And with that slope, uh, we are very limited. We can't actually use the full two point six five acres of this property. And so we needed to uh, be able to have the flexibility to adjust that, keep the sloped areas an open space um, and utilize what we have available to us. And that really is what prompted this. Um, for the record, uh, we have had uh, two short plats approved for both of two, this two separate parcels had two separate short plats. And uh, while those were approved, when it came down to engineering and design, it just didn't seem to work. Couldn't, couldn't get the room to do it. Uh, we had to put in, we had to bring in a private road with a large cul-de-sac or fire turnaround. And so that led to a lot of space difficulties. And uh, we believe that with this change of use from low density residential, medium density residential, that we would be, have the uh, product, the um, whether it be apartments or whether it be row houses, almost said townhouses, I know this is a county. Um, so it would give us that opportunity to vary up the product and be able to meet the density requirements and be able to facilitate this property. Um, I believe that I have everything submitted um, for your review. If you have any questions for me.
Any questions from the commission?
Yes, one of the concerns raised had to do with uh, staying consistent with the nature of the neighborhood and specifically asking or having concerns that it was going to be a multi-story structure. Is there, are there any multi-story structures in that general area currently?
Um, well, it kind of depends on what you say by multi-story structure and what you have in mind. Uh, with the medium density residential, we have a height restraint of forty feet. Uh, the LDR height restraint is thirty-five feet, that's only a five foot difference. Um, so we don't see really much development more than that. Um, most of the two-story, three-stories uh, takes up that height restriction or height, height requirement there. Um, so we don't see this as being a tower or anything like that because So we don't see this as being a tower or anything like that because we are simply restricted in the MDR zone.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Oh, thank you. I want to point out a couple of, a couple of different things. My wife and I moved in that neighborhood about six years.
Could I get your name and address, please?
Oh, sorry, Ryan Lothrup. And we're at 13317 North Mayfair Lane, which is in the Wannamere Heights neighborhood. And our property directly, the back of our property looks over the property of concern where that change is being proposed. So a couple of things I want to bring up is that wooded area down there does include a small nature area, which is probably about somewhere between half and full acre. And otherwise it's individual property all throughout that area. There's a wooded stretch from the back of our gated community all the way to Hastings Road, so about a mile long. And animals come up from the Waikiki Springs area into that woods. And then they follow that path all the way down to our back gate. And then they enter a wooded area across the street down there. So it's an active game trail. We've seen deer, moose, coyotes, and it's a family of turkeys that live down there pretty regular basis. So my thought on the change to that increase is that there would be a dramatic increase of foot traffic down there from not only adults, but also children. And that would affect that dramatically. And then, and then we have kids and grandchildren and they don't really pay attention to property lines. And so again, the actual natural area down there is isolated. And so if you have a tremendous increase in kids playing down there, property owners would feel compelled to fence their property in, and that would be the end of that game trail. Then also, if we have 39 units, it's likely half or more, we're going to have pets. On the other side of our property, there's an open area where there's a large public college and they actually bring their dogs over there and they don't clean up after themselves. So over the years, that'll just become a bed of excrement. You know, and then we were also concerned about tree removal as well. So that's, that's my concern.
Thank you very much. Anyone else we have online?
If Walter Ayers. I wasn't intending to go first, but I do appreciate.
Your, your sheet was on top, so.
Okay. Okay, a couple of things. I'm going to be fairly short here, if a guy in my profession can be short. I.
Name and address?
Oh, yeah. Walter Ayers, 13435 North White House Court, Spokane, Washington. I live in Arrowhead Point. And the deer that he were talking, that he was talking about go right between my house and the church. And I saw 12 of them one night last year going in his direction.
Does your wife like that on her gardens?
It doesn't bother him. We have a six-foot fence, which is another story in and of itself. But anyway. One of the things I wanted to, I wanted to note that bothers me here in a, in a hearing like this. And I do know that you folks have read everything, particularly Mr. Nolan, because I happen to remember reading in the public record what he was talking about, the multi-story structure. And nobody wants an apartment building there. Building something there is fine, like Mill Village. But I'm presuming you've all read this, everything's in the public record and what I've said. So I'm not going to reiterate that, only key things. But I do want to note for you that something is not in there. And it's this, there's a key distinction between the folks who want to, who want to change this and have this amendment and put a multi-story structure in there. Key thing, they don't live here. They don't, they don't, they won't live here and they don't care. What do they not care about? They don't really care about our opinions because even though they don't have to, they never came around early on. They've had a year to do this. They never came around early on like the church did when they made, more few Bible churches made changes. They came around, talked to the neighbors and said, hey, we're going to make these changes. We want to help you guys out. You help us out. And we did. And we, we were, there were some disagreements. We worked it out with them. But we worked it out as neighbors. These folks have done nothing to talk to the neighbors until they had to give legal notice, which just barely went out. They've had a year to do it. We have 15 days and three minutes to respond. I apologize for the short notice on that. They didn't even care enough to come around, talk to the neighbors, even though they didn't have to legally. They didn't give us the courtesy. They didn't give us the Spokane. When I moved back to Spokane, that's what we used to get years ago, was that kind of courtesy out of people who wanted to do something. We got it out of the church. We get it out of our next door neighbors. We don't get it from these folks. What I would like to say is the wildlife analysis has not been done, should be done. What I'd like you to do without going any further. I'd like you to do something that I did the other day. I took a drive down Mill Road. And I drive down there all the time. I go down to the, where the, where the turnabout is, and then I'll go down to Dartford sometimes. And what I did yesterday was I started at the turn, the turnabout. And I drove down about 25 miles an hour. And what I did was, is I turned my eyes just like this, slowly, back and forth, scanning everything. And you know, I came to appreciate more what that neighborhood is like and more what we want it to be. And excuse me, it makes, it makes me even more adamant that this should not be passed. They can build something like Mill Village. And I would ask that they, you disapprove this and make them do build something like Mill Village in the current zoning. And with that, I know my time has run, but I could always go longer if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
There is one other thing. I apologize for this because it came up in Mr. Goodmanson's talk. He talked, he put a map up there. What he didn't show you, this is a Google map of all the apartments in that area of his map. There's 17 and a good percentage of them have rent signs out there. When you drive in that area, that's what you'll see. But there, there's a lot of multifamily stuff that's in that area, but not down where we're at. So I'd ask you to take that drive.
Thank you.
If you, if you need to.
Joseph Manley.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Manley. My wife Patricia and I live at.
Give us your address. Oh, thank you.
At 13210 North White House Street. We've already submitted a written statement to the commission that includes all of the technical reasons that we believe establish why you should disapprove the request for the zoning change to CPA 12-23 North Mill Road. So I won't waste the commission's time by reading that same information back to you. Instead, I want to assure you that we are not asking for a total ban on development in our area. We recognize the need for additional housing for the county as the population grows. In our submission to you, you will see, for example, our favorable recognition of the duplex additions that have been added to our area. The developers in this case purchased the property knowing full well the zoning designation for the land in question. Just as I did when I bought my home. They now wish to change the zoning and profit from overbuilding on their lots at the expense of everyone else in the neighborhood. I believe that the developers do not currently live on that site. Nor are they likely to live there after it is developed. We are asking that the commission balance the needs of long-term residents with the aspirations of developers when making these zoning determinations. We urge you to keep the low-density residential zoning designation. This will allow for many more dwelling units to be added while retaining the character of the neighborhood. In closing, I want to thank the commission for giving us the opportunity to express our views on this rezoning request. And I want to compliment your staff who have been so patient and professional in listening to our questions and concerns and preparing for this meeting. I'm, that concludes my remarks. If you have questions for me.
Questions. Thank you, Mr. Manley.
Thank you.
Patrick Clark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Pat Clark, 402 West Center Street, Spokane 99208. I'm also the president of the Arrowhead Point Homeowners Association, whom I'm representing today. Whipple's PowerPoint concentrated on some points in their plan that support their project. However, the map that they put up there was slightly misleading. The Mead High School is a half mile radius away, but it's about a mile and a half to two miles by foot. The, the trail going to the sun is also about two miles away. There's no direct access between this proposal and the bus. That's also about two miles away. So there are some things that are misleading about that map. I think there are far more points in the Spokane County Comprehensive Plan that supports low density than the, than the proposal wants. There are approximately 381 single-family units. And if you look at all of the maps that were shown early, this is the only proposal that medium density would be surrounded totally by low density. The others were on the fringes. This is right in the middle of the low density. I'm quoting now from the county comprehensive plan, which I've looked at. And I again, I support the, that your staff done a great job. And I'm going to just quote some, some sentences out of there. In the introductory statement, the benefits include number two, assuring neighborhood community character. And I think everybody here has talked about that. The Growth Management Act goals talk about reduction of urban sprawl, respect for property, private property rights, a timeliness of the review process and citizen participation in the process. We've come on pretty late in this process that concerns us. The Urban Land Use Category Statement says that design standards ensure neighborhood character and compatibility with adjacent uses. The adjacent properties are all single-family dwellings. Chapter two of the Urban Land Use concerns itself again with community character, neighborhood considerations, and encouragement of exemplary development, which was also referenced earlier with the duplex project that's just down the road. Minimum standards to ensure compatibility of adjacent land uses. They should complement environmental features. Focus on functional interrelationships with neighborhood character. There hasn't been much interrelationship yet. It, it needs to be integrated.
Mr. Clark, can you wrap it up here pretty quick?
I'm, I will do that. I'm sorry. It, it was interesting to me last week that the county wants to buy 78 acres of trees. And now we're going to tear down 2.6 acres of trees for this project. Because this project ignores these land use statements that I've talked about, we propose that the request for LDR to MDR be taken away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Sawyer, Sager.
Captain Lord, that's for me. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you. One of the things that.
Could you give your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, Tom Sawyer. I'm the vice president of the association. 13212 North Howard Lane, Spokane, Washington, 99208. Most of the individual people who have spoken have talked about the zoning from LDR to MDR. And it's not just the zoning of this one property. It's the zoning that may occur further down on Mill Road, which is single-family and LDR now. If it goes to medium-density housing, and many of the, many of the people who live there are on large acre lots. And what we're concerned about as well is these lots being combined into apartment complexes instead of homes or duplexes where people live. I think this is an important item and one of the reasons why many people are against the the change from LDR to MDR. Also, I'd like to recommend or somehow encourage that when the developers get together and present their ideas to you, that we have an opportunity to do so at the same time. That's a bit of a problem because there isn't anything in this, in the code or in the policies that require that other than to give a 15-day notice in the newspaper. Most people don't read newspapers and don't have them anymore. What I would suggest is that the sign that is up now be put up when you have a meeting between the developers and yourselves so that the homeowners can also participate at the same time and give the recommendations rather than coming in now several months later, many months later. Those are the two points that I think are important for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other slips. Do we have anybody else that was going to want to testify? Yes, sir.
Morning.
Morning.
My name's Chris Williams. I reside at 322 West Wilson Avenue. Williams. Yeah, you bet. That's a narrow head point development. I'm also representing my mother-in-law, Lorraine Steiner, who lives at 13504 North Mill Road. First of all, good morning and thank you for me allowing, allowing me the time to address the commission. Like I said, I'm here on behalf mainly of my mother-in-law, Lorraine. She owns parcel 36064.0103 at 13504 North Mill Road. That's a lot directly north of where this development is planned for. This will be right next to her acre. She's resided in her single-family dwelling or home, as we call it, obviously, on her acre of land for the past 57 years. Obviously, she's witnessed all of the development that has taken place in this area over the years in this beautiful section of Spokane County that spans the south hillside above the Little Spokane River. I'm not here to protest development. I don't think anybody is, as the speakers before have mentioned. As we all realize, it's essential to Spokane's economic growth and support of our growing population. Many of whom these days have been priced out of the homeownership business, right? So they, they need to have other alternatives. The reason I am here and we're all here is to ask that the county ensures this development continues in a manner that remains focused on the interests of the environment, wildlife and the current homeowners. To date, the county has supported this effort by maintaining a low-density zoning status in our area. I say our area because my wife and I enjoyed the area around my mother-in-law's house so much where she was raised. We purchased a home with an acre of land over in Arrowhead Point Development 10 years ago. You know, I mean, there, there are economic considerations. I mean, given the fact that when you're talking about the homes in Arrowhead Point and Wannamere Estates, you're talking about houses with a, an average market value of probably in excess of $500,000. So there is some concern about property values when such an apartment complex would be added in our community. When Lorraine, my mother-in-law's neighbors, when they sold their portions of the parcels next to her, when this development was planned a few years ago, she was told at that time that, you know, it would be the low-density, limited number of duplex, similar, similar to the, the Mill Road construction we have further down where there's duplexes currently. The developer who built that site maintained the integrity of our area by spacing the units generously, leaving many of the native bullpines there and situating the entire development a good distance off Mill Road. Uh, leaving many of the native bullpines there, um, and situating the entire development a good distance off Mill Road. These duplexes are single level ranch-style units and they have large beautifully landscaped yards. So it meshes nicely with, you know, the existing homes in our area. So when Lorraine received a letter from the county a couple of weeks ago notifying her of the development plans on the parcels to her south. And of this hearing, we assumed it was just due diligence for the development she was already anticipating at the low-density level. It wasn't until Pat, here, stopped by my mother-in-law's home one afternoon and explained the. Truth about what was going on here, that this was to be changed to medium density, um, for a rezone. And then, then the impact. Um, so, you know, I'll, my time's up here, but I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I agree with the, uh, when, when we were looking at the wildlife impact, that, 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 I don't know who did that assessment, but. My mother-in-law's backyard is basically a bedding area for white-tailed deer. Um, I'm a big deer hunter. I could do a lot better hunting in my neighborhood and, and behind my mother-in-law's house than up by Colville where I hunt bucks every year. So, um, yeah, that's, that's basically one thing. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we've got a, she's got a picture. Yeah, I had it in my thing. I just, I didn't have time to get to it. But yeah, there's everything. Moose. Yeah, she's got a picture in her living room of a moose.
And bear.
And a bear.
And bear. Turkeys, cougars, you name it.
And is there anyone else who wants to testify on this? Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chair, just real quick, because I don't want people to leave before they have an opportunity. For those individuals who did not have an opportunity to finish what you had written, if you want to leave your written comments today for the, to be incorporated in the record, we're welcome to take those.
Great. My name is Michael Manley. Uh, I reside at one three three one eight North Mill Road, which is directly south of the proposed, uh, property in question. Um, I'd just like to say, congrats, guys. This is awesome. I'm glad to turn out. Um, I support everyone that spoke so far, uh, from, you know, the environmental impact, wildlife impact. Um, I grew up on that property. Uh, my parents moved in in ninety-three. And we've raised animals, um, you know, agriculture. We've had a garden there ever, every year since. And I think that, um, it's pretty concerning when we find out fifteen days prior and we're directly next to it. Um, I don't even know what Whipple Engineering is until I read it on the notice. So unfortunately, I was, uh, I was kind of taken aback by it with limited time to prepare. Um, but I think that all the statements that have been made today, um, kind of echo the entire neighborhood. Um, not just, you know, Arrowhead Point, but, uh, the development up, up on the hill. Um, and again, I just want to reiterate that we're not directly opposed to any development. Um, just that I think that it should be done in a reasonable and congruent manner with the rest of the neighborhood.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else?
Uh, let me check the.
Some of the comments were, um, regarding the closeness of, sorry, Ben Goodman's and Whipple Consulting Engineers, twenty-one South. Pines Road. Many of the comments were referring to the proximity of the project, uh. And the walking distance to and from the high school, to and from the STA park and ride, as well as to the Children of the Sun Trail. Walking distance, yes, that is true. That is the distance. Biking distance, however. It's only a few minutes on a bike to the STA park and ride where you can load your bike up onto the bus and take the bus. It's only a short distance to the school. It's a short distance to the Children of the Sun Trail. It's even a short distance to and from the shopping centers on a bike. We understand the concerns of the, uh, wanting to, uh. Blend in with the, with the neighborhood. We are proposing a residential development. It is a residential area. We are not proposing a light industrial. We're not proposing a commercial. We are proposing a residential development. I think that needs to be said because we shouldn't make such a distinction between. The low-density residential and the medium-density residential and put them at odds with each other. And, um, finally, I believe that this is a good development while we don't have the space. That the cottages, Mill Road cottages has, they were on a lot larger parcels and they could make that loop around. We didn't have that space. We had to, uh, work within the confines that we have. I understand the wildlife concerns, but as I've stated this body before, uh, wildlife within the UGA is not supported. We are not here in the UGA to create wildlife habitat. Because that puts people and the wildlife at risk to encourage wildlife to come into the habitat that we create. And force them to cross over roadways and cross over through neighborhoods. So we prefer to keep the habitat outside of the UGA where. It is wider open spaces, less fencing, less pets, dogs to agitate such wildlife. And force them into a situation that they, uh, should not be in. Having hit many deer over the years, um. Deer are going to be everywhere. They just are. They know where the hunters hunt, so they don't go there. I would ask that you would, uh, consider this, uh, application and approve it to move forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Of the two point six four acres, uh, you had indicated that. A portion of it is not developable. Is that correct? And what does that represent of the two point six four acres?
I don't have the number right now. It really depends on what we do for walls, um, and landscaping, um, but.
Yeah, okay. At a glance, what is, what, what is the percentage?
We're roughly about half and, half an acre to three quarters of an acre that has that slope, uh, to it.
So approximately two acres is developable or, or, or greater, but not much. Uh, number two, uh, question is that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, um. The present zoning, uh, would allow for how many homes to be built on the property then?
Uh, currently at, uh, eight units per acre, the, uh, zoning would allow for twelve units to be built on the property.
And with the proposal that you're recommending, how many units are you looking at?
With MDR, we are allowed to, at fifteen units per acre, we are allowed to, uh, develop up to thirty-nine units.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Do we have anyone else? You, you can by writing. Leave us a note.
The Planning Commission, generally their rules are we get one three-minute piece.
It's us, the commissioners. That'd be fine.
Uh, I'm in favor of just, uh, moving forward. I think we've heard the, the, the points of folks and I think we should move forward. I don't think we need to have a debate here, I guess, is what I'm suggesting. It's, it's for us to have a debate, not for them.
Let's, let's move forward. Without, without objection, I propose, I move. Without objection, I close the public hearing and look to our commissioners for questions and comments. Any objection? Help yourself. Logan? Oh, I thought you were.
I mean, I will go first, but I don't need to go first.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I, do we have a motion for this one prepared, sir?
Uh, we do. The motion would be to move to recommend Board of County Commissioners approval of this amendment.
We only have one condition, as I remember, was just the, it was something, say again?
Yeah, the applicant would be required to do a archaeological survey of the site, which was a. Condition requested by the State Archaeological and Historic Preservation Department.
So, so if the, if the commission and the county commissioners approved this, it would be with that condition.
That is correct.
Look for a motion?
No, I, I have a question, but that's.
Okay, question?
Uh, I know that the aquifer comes bulging out many spots within a sensitive area of this, uh, uh, about how many? Are we close by? I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned about that because I know that there's a lot of, uh, the aquifer coming out.
Let's look. I don't know that I have that information in front of me.
Well, I didn't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I'm, I'm, I'm not a, there's nothing physical saying that it's, it's in this location.
We, we did not see that as a constraint in the staff analysis, no.
Thank you.
And it's, it's, uh, again, it's always important to realize that so much of our central area sits in.
Over the aquifer.
The aquifer area. Um, it's, it's, it's not, it can't be an exclusionary criteria or virtually nothing would get built in, in, around Spokane. However, it has criteria by which building, when you come to the permit level. You must demonstrate that you are handling stormwater properly. You're handling your, your other, uh, effluence properly.
I just was referring to that I feel that within a half a mile of this site. I know of a couple of spots where it's coming out and I didn't know if there's any site of that on this site. That's why I'm asking.
We, we did not see that on our technical analysis.
Do we have a motion? We, I don't think we had a motion.
The Easy Language Commissioners has moved to recommend Board of County Commissioners approval of this amendment.
So moved.
Second?
All second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
And, uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, in your deliberations, it would be nice if you would make or recommend a, or would. Would deliberate specifically over UL two sixteen. So one, is it near commercial areas? Near is not defined in our conference of plan, so you need to discuss whether it's near. Is it near public open spaces? And does it have good access to major arterials? If one of those elements are missing, it's not fatal, but then you also have to have a deliberation about pros outweighing the cons on the record.
Well, I spent some time looking at that while we were sitting here and so just to be accurate. Um, there's been many numbers thrown around, but to be accurate, um, it is just over a half a mile of a walk. Um, not, not a radius, but a walk to the trailhead, um, for the Waikiki Springs. So just about a half mile. It says point six, um, depends where you drop your pin. Um, but about a half mile walk to there. So a really nice open space for walking. It's less than a mile, um, to the shopping center at the corner of Hastings and Mill Road. So less than a mile walk to there. It's about, um, one point four miles to the center of Mead High School's campus. Likewise, about point six miles to what I would consider to be the end of the Children of the Sun Trail. Um, at the bottom of the valley there where the shared path on the side of the road kind of ends. Um, that's about point six miles. Um, likewise, um, at that point, you're very close. Um, to the freeway, um, you have to kind of go up, uh, up the road to get there. Um, and I didn't measure that distance exactly, but you're in a car at that point. And so I think, um. Bickering about a quarter of a mile is, is, isn't probably, um, not necessary. Um, there's also a golf course, um, as well. Again, usually you're driving there. We're talking about a mile to the golf course as well. So lots of, um, open spaces, um, access by walk to, um, a. A commercial center. That's just one commercial center. There's another one a little further away. Um, and then the, the bus facility, I think importantly in this area is a wa, a, a park and ride. Um, so really the intent is not so much for folks to be walking here. Um, but an acknowledgement that a lot of folks in North Spokane own a car and will need a park and ride to drive to, um, where they'll hop on their bus. Um, so to me, this feels really close, um, to the things that are necessary to support medium-density residential development based on the code.
Mr. Noah?
I, I just wanted to summarize, Ms. Porgram. So, and I think actually you've covered a lot of this, Logan. So the points you thought we, we needed to specifically address is the major arterials and public transportation. You addressed both of those. As well as the open space. Was the, was there a third that I've missed?
It was the commercial areas, but I believe Mr. Cam.
Okay, so you did. Okay, you've addressed all three. All right. Uh, I drive past this location every day and there's all of those as well as, uh, other, uh, higher. Uh, higher height structures in that immediate area as well.
Yeah, I find the height limit, um, to be pretty compelling. Um, we're talking about a five-foot difference in height limit. Um, that just doesn't seem, I understand that the density is higher, but a lot of the comments are about visual difference. And like I said, I've seen references to towers and we're talking about five feet. Um, it's pretty unnoticedable in most residential neighborhoods, a difference of five feet. So, um, I think, you know, although there may be a difference in design from a single-family residential unit. Um, the height concern seems to be a rather moot point to me.
Any other comments, Melissa? I'm gonna ask the question, did we get a motion?
Yeah, yeah, we have a motion in a second. We're in the dis, we're in a discussion.
Any other discussion on the motion? Not a move to close testimony? Discussion?
So moved. Well, I just, a- actually, I want to say a couple more things. I'm gonna, I'm, I want to be clear. I'm gonna vote yes on this. Um, because I think that this is important and because it meets the standards that are set before us. Um, and, and just to be clear, that's, um. Could you, could you say again, Jessica, which specific session you were, section you were citing?
That was UL two sixteen.
It's on the screen. Thank you. Um, and so, yeah, I, I think that not only does it meet UL two sixteen, um, but I also think that it meets UL two point one seven. Um, and I think that this is a common sense place for medium-density residential. I'm not sure it's a common sense place for high-density residential, but that's not what we're being asked about. Um, we're talking about a five-foot height difference. I would love to live in this walking distance to these amenities. And so I'm going to support this and, um, move it forward to the county commissioners.
All a question? Any objection? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Just for the record, I am abstaining based on, uh, knowing the, the applicant.
So we have four, four and one abstention. Motion passes. Mr. Chesnut, you're next.
Uh, if I could, I just want to thank everybody for coming down here and giving your public testimony. I know it may feel like we didn't hear you, but I just want to thank you for your public testimony.
Did I screw up? Keeping my mouth shut is the hardest thing. It's actually kind of, kind of interesting. Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
Are we gonna resume the agenda at the beginning now? Is that the game plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready? Ready.
Uh, we're going, uh, back to the start. Uh, this is a project that was remanded from twenty sixteen. It's called Amendment Number Four. Uh, it is on the, uh, Waikiki and Five Mile Road area. You can see here, Whitworth Water, Spokane County Sewer, Mead and Fire District Nine. Here's the aerial. Showing its context, uh, notably with that transmission line, um, as well as its access to, uh, Waikiki Road. And it, well, it touches, uh, Five Mile Road. Uh, again, me, this is proposing to a, uh. Medium-density residential. Uh, cluster development's possible in here and, uh, in related to, uh, the, some of the issues that we've talked about. It has good access. Frontage on Waikiki and Five Mile Roads, uh, both are arterials. The site is less than a mile from commercial and open space areas. And the G Growth Management Hearings Board remand commissions have been met notably through the Capital Facilities Plan adoption. Uh, MDNS from SEPA was produced. It has site development limits that were imposed by building and planning. It has access limitations, traffic mitigations from both the county and STA. Traffic mitigations from both the county and STA. In the remand issues. Uh, one was county lacked the current CFP that has been remedied by in December of twenty two. Uh, the amendment uh that you're proposed, that you are sending forward today will amend that CFP, but it was already done. Mead has said they can accommodate future development. Uh, the. Count plan or a twenty seventeen amendment changed some lands along Hawthorne uh west of Division Street into. Mixed use from low density residential, which provides uh additional proximity to jobs, uh for example. And changes in op- uh in ownership notably related to. The Kalispell Tribe uh purchasing the Spokane Country Club and making the restaurant at least available to the public. So. Uh, here's uh the specific elements that we were talking about. Uh, we've subsequently received uh letters from Water, Transportation, Fire School and Stormwater. Showing their ability to serve this site without an LOS deficiency. Uh, Futurewise commented that they would prefer keeping, they they're asking to re- to zone it to the. Uh, LDR, which it already is, uh so we're simply interpreting that. They would prefer keeping it as low density residential instead of medium density for their reasons. Uh, we explain some of that here. Um, single family in in our perspective from both the building and planning side, uh, single family housing. Uh, within a transmission corridor is highly challenging. Uh, multi-family construction or commercial construction being multi-family housing is better able to adapt. To site circumstances uh and and densities than single family is. And while multi-family uh was. Not supported by Futurewise as it was too isolated, didn't have acts, direct access to uh other parts. It's sort of ignoring that um Whitworth University is is literally within walking distance on this. And so a multi-family project here. Could serve students, faculty, staff uh at the university. Taking some pressure off of additional development that's happened extensively in and around the university over these past, even just couple of years. Um, the traffic, um, and this is important. The the proposal before you today is to address the conditions that were part of the remand. It was not to re- reevaluate the entire project. Uh, and so previously, traffic was prohibited on Five Mile Road by board resolution. That stays in place, uh emergency access only is what's being allowed on Five Mile Road.
Scott, if I could, could you just clarify a little bit more? What are the specific elements then that we are able to consider? Um, as part of the remand, and maybe that's a better question for Jessica, just because I don't want to think about more than what I need to think about.
So you're uh Jessica Pilgrim for the record, so your options today um as. The PC are either to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they affirm the earlier amendment, or you will have the option to. Move to recommend that you, that they rescind the earlier amendment. What you're considering is narrowed just to what the GMHB identified as um reasons for finding. Um, noncompatibility and invalidating the earlier amendment. So it's just um whether the CFP. Um, and whether a new CFP exists, which we've uh are passing today, and we also passed another one back in twenty twenty two when uh. That Scott referred to, whether we determined and addressed any indirect uh concurrency issues, which we can always go back and show you the um. The concurrency analysis here, whether we um. Earlier, the GMHB found that we did not address the uh UL two sixteen, I think it's two is two sixteen, which was, or yes. The, is it near commercial areas? Is it near public open spaces and does it have good access to major arterials? So we have to go through that. Um, again. And then um whether the school issues, which is also part of that indirect concurrency analysis, have been resolved. And then an earlier um concern noted by the GMHB was whether adequate transportation facilities exist. Um, but I would suggest, uh, you're welcome to discuss that. I would suggest that's inappropriate at this stage. You can discuss whether there is good access to major arterials. Um, you're welcome to discuss the DA, but there is a Spokane County case that came out in um twenty thirteen. Uh, at, out of div three, it is a published decision that discusses um. When it's appropriate to consider basically con- concurrency, direct concurrency, the adequacy of the roads and that. It is um, it's appropriate for the county to defer that decision until the time of development. So specifically, um, just so we have a record and so that you guys can be adequately prepared. Um, the ju- uh, the court said a number of GMA provisions cut against the growth board's conclusion that MAP amendments require contemporaneous amendment. Of other elements of the comprehensive plan or stated differently, the MAP amendment concurrency, and they were referring to um. Specifically uh roads. And then finally, provisions of the GMA dealing with local project review cut against the growth board's conclusion that any amendment to the land use plan. Requires contemporaneous reevaluation and amendment of the capital facilities and transportation uh uh element and plans. They contemplate meaningful action at the project approval stage to ensure conformity with the conference of plan, and they cite RCW thirty six. Seventy B oh three oh one, and then also um. That thirty six seventy B oh four oh one, the provides set of proposed projects consistency with a local government's development regulations. Um, here would be concurrency with road standards shall be decided that the local government during project review. By consideration of, among other factors, the type of land use density infrastructure. Um, and the court specifically discussed, uh, while there might be. Uh, benefits to planning and deciding this far ahead, whether there'd be direct concurrency with traffic, um. There are countervailing disadvantages, the court said. That early evaluation point is in a significant respects premature. As the county argues, and this was a different case, of course. Until a specific project is submitted for review and approval, the county will not know the project's specific impacts, what mitigation might. It might require and how the process and results of concurrency review might cause the applicant to make changes to its project. So at this early stage, I would suggest that um while you're welcome to discuss direct concurrency, it's not necessary. But what is necessary is, is there or could there be good access to major arterials?
Thank you for that.
I have a question, um. Draw my memory, it seemed like there was some. Layouts that we're calling that we'd have another access going out, emergency access. Besides the one on Five Mile, but another one to the north. Is that, I have no idea, I haven't seen a design or anything else. Is that still in in place or or what are we talking about here?
There was uh an earlier part of this that allowed for ninety nine units. To be constructed with access off of Waikiki Road directly. Anything beyond that needed a second access. That second access can traditionally, I mean, it can also be an emergency access, but the other prohibition still stands. There's no essentially domestic access allowed to Waikiki Road.
Right.
So right now, there's uh, you've got the chance for emergency access, uh but any. Development proposal that was going to go beyond ninety nine units would have to figure out a second access point.
Okay, thank you.
That's a condition of approval. So we're, we're being asked to approve.
That was, that was previously done. So that's, for that, that exists in the previous decision.
So if you recommend affirmation, that remains, but if you, if you do rescission, then it just undoes the entire thing, so.
We're, we're happy to take any other questions. I, I think uh counsel laid out the salient points of. Of your responsibilities today.
Shall I go ahead? Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Um, my name is Deborah Rowan, R A U E N. I live at one five one eight West Forest Hills Drive. Or Court, depending on my mailing address versus my legal address. Um, I want to address several of the things that were in there. The first is that. Um, I do not find it a significant change that the country club is now the Kalispell Golf Club and somehow that ameliorates. You know, you, two point one six and two point one seven, that those are services that would be useful and necessary. For people who are living in apartments. I think that's disingenuous. Um, it was brought up during the presentation that Whitworth. Could use the apartments that would be built there for their staff and students. When we went through. The last process, Whitworth wrote a letter that they had dorm space on campus. They did not want further development. They preferred their students not to live in apartments and wanted them to be in their own area, so that's disingenuous. Um, in terms of going to medium density residential. If only ninety nine units are built, it's below the amount per acre of dwellings needed for medium density residential. And there is, there has not been a magical wand that's been waved that finds a second exit. You can't do Five Mile Road. At one point, there was something about. That that access from Waikiki would be the beginning of an expressway that would go. Um, behind Saint George's and that's so incredibly far away and like probably never gonna happen. So you, you're doing it based on ninety nine units when you're changing the zoning for the three hundred. That make no sense because there won't be a second access. And there is a significant development going in immediately north. That's gonna exit onto Waikiki, and you also have that roundabout right there is the only point. To go in and out for Saint George's and the only way for Mead students who live in Five Mile to go. And right now, during those times when people are going in and out, it's backed up for so long. And you're gonna have those new homes that are being built at the maximum density for LDR just north of it. And this one, so when you say good access to major arterials, I don't define that as good access. Um, the other thing that um is, there's, is terms of services is. There's things around, but no grocery stores, no major things that are what you would want. There's been no change in open spaces in the, the golf club. And the mixed use that is across that's adjacent to Whitworth. Is very much in keeping with the university, but has nothing to do with what's happening on the other side of Waikiki, which is a lot of. Of homes on uh multi-acre properties. Thank you.
I have a question for counsel. Um, she brought up a. Point I never thought about, and that is. Our zoning has minimum and maximum densities. Um. That site's not easy. I mean, do we have leeway? To approve this if they don't, if they can't achieve the minimum density?
I will defer that to my planning friends. Who probably consider the density in the project more than I have.
If, if this were starting from scratch, there might be that discussion between the developer and and planning staff to point out. Where the limits are and where the opportunities would be. The challenge today is your decision is based entirely on only the facts that were remanded from twenty sixteen. So we're not here to change the project. We're here to talk about whether those conditions that were found deficient have been cured.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, nobody, no, no yellow cards.
I, I have a question on the traffic flow, uh. I know that the improvements were made with the, the turnabout in that whole area right in through there was, was there special conditions um? When they were designing and putting the new roadway uh for this project, because it was, it's been under consideration for. Seven or eight years, I think, for a long period of time, I think.
Bob?
Uh, Mike, this is Robert uh Brock uh Spokane County Building company. Uh, I can speak to that. So when this original proposal was brought forth, um, Public Works Department took a look at it. And. What they decided was that access to this site. As proposed by the applicant off Waikiki, it did to be a public roadway going east-west. And. In their statements, they um mentioned that that public roadway. Was gonna be part of a future continuing roadway that would go um east-west. And so. Right, yeah.
Thank you, dear.
I do have a follow-up question for Mr. Brock. Just, and this is in regards to the medium density residential, those minimum and maximum standards. Is that based on the entire parcel, correct? It's as opposed to, because there's large portions of this parcel, it would be very difficult to develop. I, I don't, I just wanted to clarify how that's interpreted. And I understand it, we're not looking to re-litigate any of that. This is for my personal understanding.
Okay, medium density residential allows up to fifteen units per acre. Um, I think it's articulated that there in our comprehensive plan that there is a. Target amount of um density that could be produced there. But that doesn't mean that if you wanted to go below that, that your project would be denied.
I'm looking at, I'm looking specifically fourteen, six, oh, six, three hundred, and I know that's not fair. I've got it right in front of me. It does say over six to six, fifteen. Units per acre. So is that six then is not necessarily a minimum threshold, but it's like a, a target or a goal?
Well, when you're talking about a large site like this, it has a number of um. Utility easements on it. Um, certainly you'd probably factor in that those are basically unbuildable areas of this site. And so. I'm not aware that we've ever gone in and looked at uh a proposal and go, you're not meeting the density of the site. Um, because you're not building at least six units per acre. I mean, we could probably do some math on that when, when the project came around and and look at the unbuildable portions of the site. Uh, parts that have steep slopes, parts that have um. Um. Utility easements and subtract that from the uh the gross acreage. And then we never know if a project might develop further in the future.
Okay, so, I understand, thank you.
Clarify a little bit, um, the. The zoning categories that we use are leftover from decades ago on how you design zoning categories. And the mu- the medium density residential in particular still says six to fifteen, while the lower, the LDR was changed to eight. Two to eight units an acre in twenty twenty and two to ten units an acre if you include duplexes or some urban design factors. So you could already go to, you know, ten units an acre in the LDR, well above the six that's the floor in the MDR. So we look at those as, as the, the floors of those being sort of irrelevant. And it, and the, at least the starting calculation is looking at gross acreage, and then you, then you back off the unbuildable areas.
And then the tie-in to this would be, so the ninety nine threshold that we've talked about in terms of the second access. So that's a requirement that they have to meet and that we have uh. They would have to meet to go forward with a permit. We don't necessarily have to uh show that they can do that today, and we don't know they're going to. All right.
That's correct.
All right, that helps, thank you.
It, it seems to me like we've exhausted the public testimony. Uh, without objection, I'd like to close the public comment and uh. Move to the county, the planning commission for discussion.
So moved.
I was told I didn't have to have it approved. Is that right?
That's correct. The chair can, can close the public hearing without objection if no one objects.
Uh, commissioners, questions, comments, thoughts?
Or are we ready to go? I guess I will ask, I. Um, I respect Futurewise's um perspectives. They, their comment really doesn't give much reasoning except to say that in their opinion, there are better places for medium red, density residential. Did they, did they offer any other, I, I read the letter, that's it. Did they offer any other clarity than that? It doesn't seem, it seems like rather ambiguous reasoning.
That, that's what we received from them most recently, and we uh trans- or moved some of that relevant language to the slide. But there was no further elucidation.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I would make a, I would suggest that we approach it as suggested by Ms. Pilgrim, that we. Go through and first address, have we met all of the remand. Uh, topics and then go through the UL two sixteen.
Well, yeah, let's make our motion first, right? Did we, no, um. Is it in here?
It is.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that we affirm the earlier amendment of CPA oh four sixteen as passed in Resolution one eight dash zero eight three one. And I'm looking for a second.
Second? I'll second that. Second by pride? Discussion. And Aaron, Alan, you wanted to have, were you asking that we have our attorney lead us through this, these steps to support?
I don't think so. She's already laid out what she recommended that we do. I think that's, and is pretty much what Logan did the last time. I thought it was a very appropriate discussion approach. Okay.
I measured some things. Um, we're one point one miles to Hawthorne and three ninety-five. Uh, which is, you know, pretty large uh, shopping area. Um, that's the furthest way I went. Um, it's one mile to those same switchback trails that we were talking about for Waikiki Springs. Uh, point eight miles to the Little Garden Cafe and gas station, if you know where that is, kind of on the corner there. Point six nine miles to uh, the Fairwood Shopping Center, the same one we were talking about on the last application. And it's, you know, really across the street from Whitworth, but I guess it's half a mile to the Whitworth um, to the Pine Bowl, the outdoor um, football stadium. Um, so you know, from there, um, else, you know, other distances to places on campus. So those are some distances for you.
I'd like to add to that, that this site is very difficult. And we need affordable housing and, and as uh, someone said, you know, I think Scott said that the, the difficult site works for multifamily and it, and we need affordable housing and whether Whitworth is ready for students today, they will be at some point in time. And the neighborhood needs them. And so I, I think it's a, I think it's a very creative proposal that we need to support.
And um, I'll just address the, the public comment, although I respect Whitworth's opinion and where they want their students to live. I also recognize that students have agency and want to live where they want to live. Um, and so juniors and seniors don't want to live in dorms often and want other um, options. I know lots of Whitworth students share houses, um, but there's just not a lot of apartment opportunities right here. Um, I should also point out at the Hawthorne three ninety-five, there's shopping centers, but also a Spokane County Public Library um, that was just recently constructed there as well.
Have we covered the questions you wanted to address?
So the one thing I would ask is that you specifically answer the question of do, does everyone agree that those distances that were listed are near? Because it's not defined, so you have to make the direct connection is, are those near?
I, this is Melissa Whitstrug. I would say the, the distances that were cited are within your typical fifteen to twenty minute walk. Whether you're able to walk quickly or able to amble along. So that's kind of the typical measurement. You're right. It's not defined specifically, but um, that, that is important. And I want to note that the CFP has been updated and we are considering a further update to it. Um, and that was part of the, the um, remand to us. Uh, whether the site is particularly difficult to develop, that's not uh, really what we're, our purview is. Um, that will happen at the development stage. So I think that, that along with uh, my colleagues' comments, that the remand has been addressed. But I yield to my colleagues.
I, I would agree. So I wondered, on the UL two sixteen, I think that we, uh, between your comments and other comments. So we've talked about the commercial areas where it may not be ideal. There are within reasonable distance, same thing for the public open spaces. And uh, there, I could see criteria as well in terms of the actual development where you may be perhaps uh, placed out upon them just simply based on the fact that there are areas that are uh, not uh, developable based on the uh, the threshold or the, the density. And major arterials, it is, it's right on a major arterial. And we've talked about a threshold that is requirement if they go beyond a certain uh, number of units in any case. So from what I see, it meets all of the threshold requirements for UL two sixteen. And for the remand, I think you actually covered all of those. I, I do believe that we've met all of the remand issues and that it would be appropriate to move forward.
Yeah, I guess I'll just clarify too, that although I provide those distances, I also consider them to be relatively near um, within a normal walk shed. I didn't mention a bus station, but I'm, I'm almost positive there's a bus station at Whitworth as well. Uh, that would provide ac- access to the south. So within uh, between a half mile and a mile, I'm not exactly sure where that is on Whitworth's campus, but um, between a half mile and a mile walk to a bus stop. Um, and then also if you're looking for a park and ride option, the park and ride, you're driving in this situation, but is also within a close drive. I didn't um, do that distance, but you know, it was, it would be similar to the last project. So I consider most of these um, um, you know, amenities to be near and to satisfy UL two point one six. If we were looking larger, maybe we could think about bigger things, but I think for this purpose, we're there.
Ten, can we move forward? I call for the question. Sorry.
Question called. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Sorry, Logan. That's motion passes five minutes. I, I would like to propose a uh, a, a six-minute break and be back here. Yeah, won't be, that's three minutes, but. Uh, well, it's interesting because we were at a, the planning training session and, and the speaker wasn't here and she started in five minutes.
Um, where, where are we going next? Did you, do, are we gonna stick to the regular agenda? I thought is that just a request from the? That's fine with me. So five next. Cool.
The planning commission is back in session. I need a little shock collar.
Commissioners, we are uh, doing another slight agenda adjustment to accommodate uh, folks didn't have a deadline to leave in forty-five minutes or so. So we're gonna go to number five. Uh, this is a uh, low density to a high density resol- resolution request on five acres at North Country Homes Boulevard and Wall Street. Uh, you can see all the utility providers. There's the aerial showing the church and the land around it. Uh, you can see again mostly uh, residential development. Um, I think many people have been through that intersection and stoplight over time. Uh, staff analysis supports this under both criteria one and criteria two for zoning amendment. Traffic mitigation and an archaeological study where the requested uh, mitigations from the MDNS. There we miss, there we go. I'm sorry, went past this. Our uh, benchmark criteria, UL two point sixteen. The site has, has good access to major arterials. They're both uh, adjacent to it. The site is near the Division Street Commercial Corridor, about half a mile. Uh, it is served by STA. It is near open space, uh, less than a mile and within also the normal service area for parks. So again, some of our other elements, was there public notice? Yes, same as before. Posted the legal notice at fifteen, notice with adjacent property owners and sign posted on site. Is it consistent with the plan? Um, yes, we say here clearly underutilized lands are good can, good candidates for more intense use. There is no taking as it is a owner uh, uh, initiated amendment. Uh, the, the analysis shows no degradation of levels of service for any of our elements and the SEPA determination will be determined by your vote. As of yesterday, there was no public comment received by us. So here's where we land. Uh, we would be happy to stop and let the chair open public hearing on CPA oh five.
So moot. Public testimony is now open. The applicant. Do we have an applicant here? Yes, please step forward and give your name and address.
Clifton Trimble, um, with Storehow Engineering. We are at five ten East Third Avenue in Spokane. Thank you, commissioners and staff. Good to be here today. Um, I'm a senior planner of Storehow Engineering and we represent the client, which is Country Homes Christian Church. As Mr. Chesney said, we meet a lot of the criteria. Um, we're excited about the project. It's on the, uh, at the nexus of North Country Homes Boulevard and uh, North Wall Street. Okay, here we go. So I'd like to just walk through just some of what's going on in the site and kind of tell the story of, of the intentions and, and where we are and what we want to do in the past and the future and what brings us here. Um, so this is the site. It's five acres approximately, I think five point oh six. And currently it's zoned LDR and we'd like to move to HDR. This is um, the scenario of what's going on. Um, to walk around the site, this is a view from Wall Street looking to the northwest. Um, exist- existing onsite is a church there and within this is a little, I believe a preschool and some uh, um, learning offices within that. This is the site looking back down towards uh, Wall Street, looking to the southwest. And this is on the other side of the street here, looking towards the northeast. Some of the additional comprehensive plan um, uh, compliance criteria. Uh, our project supports the comprehensive plan goals and policies um, of the urban land use section of the comprehensive plan subsections UL one A, which relates to health and safety. Um, as it's near a lot of these amenities that we'll go into in a little bit. It's also supported by goal UL seven, which guides efficient development close to services and amenities, which I'll go into a little bit more. And then um, in section UL seven three, it's within the urban growth boundary. So it has a lot going for it. Um, what that distills down to and, and um, the, the planning crew can underscore this if they'd like to, but what this distills down to in the review criteria for this type of a project is if the parcel's adjacent to a close to um, or in close proximity to other high-density residential parcels. If the parcel's adjacent to an urban arterial, if the parcel is near commercial uses and if the parcel served by pu- public transit. Uh, we hit all those um, marks. The proposal's immediately adjacent to seven high-density residential parcels. I got a map coming up here and I'll show where those are. Um, the project is adjacent to and flanked by two urban principal arterial streets, which are North Wall Street and come, and North Country Homes Boulevard. And the parcel is within a half mile-ish to the major Division Street Corridor. That is um, it's immediately um, close to grocery outlet Walgreens and numerous churches, schools, needing and drinking, drinking establishments and day-to-day uses and amenities. Uh, the parcel is served by public transit. It has two bus stops immediately adjacent to the site on Wall Street. And Country Homes Boulevard, North Wall Street also have sidewalks connecting to these transportation stops um, and surrounding the entire parcel. So this shows where these other HDR parcels are. So they're immediately adjacent to these commerce, some of these are commercial uses, but these are zoned HDR also. Um, the urban arterials, of course, are North Country Homes Boulevard here and North Wall Street. Um, so a- again, some of those mitigation factors are uh, contributions to um, this intersection here on, you know, possible timing optimization in the future for future development. Um, and the MDMS um, to do just a cultural resource survey to see if there's anything additional here that might need consideration. But this really kind of breaks down, collapses all those frames into these amenities and compliance criteria. So this is about oh, it doesn't work on the TV. Okay, it's all right. It's, it's, it's all right. Yeah, you try to get too fancy and it backfires. So this is about a half mile radius circle. And as you can see, this is the Division Street Corridor. Um, which would really serve a higher density population. Um, of course, there's a need for multifamily housing in Spokane. There's that ongoing crisis or issue. Um, so this is a subject parcel, obviously. These are the two urban arterials. These are where those two bus stops are located that I mentioned. And these are some of those amenities. We've got the school here. Um, I don't recall which school this is, but we have Via Vista Preschool ahead of uh, just north of it, Shasta Kindergarten just to the south. And we've got Saint Thomas Church here. So these are just a few of the amenities. And you can see some of the open space, which is just to the west here. Um, and there's other open spaces as well. But uh, you know, some of the examples of the Division Street Corridor, um, again are we've got the strip mall here. This is where the Walgreens is, uh, grocery outlet, things like that. So it just is a shield for this type of development. We're excited about the project. The only bad thing is there used to be a Long John Silver's down here and I don't think it's there anymore. Um, so some of the things that could happen is the intention of the client, you know, it could be something like uh, this, which the intention would be on this uh, in the this, which the intention would be an independent senior living facility, so not assisted but independent living. Which would obviously, you know, assist the aging population and having this right in between, you know, these arterials and adjacent to higher-density residential. And the key, the key factor being close to these goods and services right along Division. So this is the idea of what this could be. Here's just some renderings of the form and bulk, you know, it would be compliant with all the building code and, you know, at the time of permitting, of course. And so these are just a couple of renderings and I'll end on this slide, but we're really excited about the project. I'm excited to be a part of it and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
If I'm not mistaken, this was was presented to us here about how long ago, originally?
A month ago in preview and earlier in the spring.
Has there been any changes?
No, it's the same project that we
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to thank you for the way that you present this. And I know you, you know, the applicants are not held to this design, we're not at that phase, but the way you presented allows me to have a vision and that's what we're trying to do while we're sitting up here is imagine what things could look like. And so again, I know they're not held to this, but this helps me get the vision and I also like how you provide us with some street views so we can kind of get a feel for things. And so I really appreciate the format.
You're welcome.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Elizabeth Pike.
Thank you. My name's Elizabeth Pike. I live at eighty-seven oh seven North Wall on the second house from the corner north of the light at Country Homes. I appreciate the goal. I was concerned about a huge apartment building being there, but I think that we do need more assisted living places, nice places for elderly people to live. I am concerned about property values of the single homes in the area. And I'm concerned about the traffic at the lights, but I don't think that assisted living necessarily impacts the traffic hugely. I I do have one comment to make, though. The house, the property house just to the north of me on the corner of Wall and Country and Price Road. I received a letter like two days after the opportunity to make comment. They're subdividing that property into another single-dwelling home and two duplexes, I believe. And I didn't get notice in time to comment about that. So, but I don't think that's.
I I don't know how to respond to that.
I don't think that's
Was that for a different project?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the property just to the north of me. Someone who lives in Chalas owns that property, I guess. I called the real estate agent. And they're subdividing it into a, there's a single-dwelling home on the property and they're adding another single-dwelling home and two duplexes.
I would, I would, if you have some time, I would encourage you to just stop by the planning office if you have any questions about that project and you could
Yeah.
help you out on that.
Yeah, they will. They're already breaking ground, but it was disappointing to not get notice in time for that process, for that project. But anyway, so thank you very much.
I'm usually confused, but I'm curious, are you propose, in favor of this proposal or are you against?
Well, I wasn't sure what I was because I didn't know what they were actually doing. So, yes, I was not in favor of it, but at this point, I think that's probably a really good idea.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you for your testimony and for your time.
And I appreciate your open mind that you came here thinking one way and could be, could be convinced that maybe you should think a different way. I appreciate that.
I I have a question, Mr. Chairman. We're, we're going to multifamily, but the use is going to be assisted living?
I think it was, I think it was not assisted. It was unassisted senior living. So, you know, probably some sort of age limit, but not assisted.
Is this going to be owned by the church then for that purpose? I guess I'm just, just curious.
Yes, so we represent, and I believe don't hold me to this, the business relationship, a nonprofit real estate agency that works with Country Homes Christian Church. So it would be still, I believe, owned by the church. So it would be kind of a synergy and it would be independent living. So, you know, they would be able to be right next to the church for day-to-day services. So, but that's, that's the target. I mean, it could change somewhat, but that is the intent of this proposal.
And I might suggest that the church sees this as part of their mission in some way. I'm, I'm speaking for them. Maybe here, I don't know that for sure, but I suspect that that's part of why they're eager to do this.
Okay, but let's take this hand. Jason? Would you unmute, Puse, Jason?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Now we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I've never used this before. So my name's Jason Goss. I live at eight four one seven North Country Homes, which is pretty much just across the street from where this is going to be. And I'm in opposition of this. First of all, the, I mean, yes, it is surrounded sort of or butted up against to high-density residential. However, none of that is high-density residential. The apartments on Shasta, as far as I know, are medium. I mean, it's a pretty big lot and there's only like thirty units in it. It's, you know, just a couple of two-story, well, three, I think, two-story buildings with like eight units apiece. And not some massive four-story building like they're trying to put in. You know, I understand they can build stuff on their own property, but, you know, I didn't buy across the street because I wanted a massive, you know, four-story apartment complex right across the street from me. I mean, it's an eyesore. It doesn't fit in with the neighborhood at all. There's, there's nothing that size around it. The rest of the high-density residential is actually commercial buildings. And I'm assuming are going to stay that way. And they're not even across the street from my house. They're on the other side. They're on Wall, not Country Homes. But yeah, you know, I, I don't like the idea of shoehorning a massive apartment complex, even if it is for elderly people back in there. You know, if they were proposing, you know, like a few row houses and stuff back there or whatever. You know, whatever, that's not an eyesore. It fits in with the neighborhood and everything. But this building does not. It doesn't match anything. It's going to sand out like a sore thumb. It's going to ruin our property values. Which I don't think the church has either consider or care about, which is unfortunate. I just, I don't like the idea. It's, it just, it, again, it doesn't fit the neighborhood at all. You know, at least it would be, you know, elderly people and they're not likely to break into our yards and stuff like, you know, you have to worry about with a regular apartment complex usually, but it's just, again, it just does not fit the, you know, the way the neighborhood looks. It, it would stand out. It, it, it just, in my mind, it doesn't make any sense to put a four-story building right there in the middle of, you know, a bunch of single-story residential houses, you know, and some commercial buildings.
Any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public here that wants to testify on this one?
Just, just a reminder.
Pardon?
The last caller was, was specifically referring to a piece of architecture. This is, as we know, this is a land use decision and that drawing that was put up there by Storehog is simply a concept, like a massing structure, what could happen.
Anyone else that wants to testify?
Just, just a reminder on that front, Scott. Oh, if anyone wants to testify first, go ahead.
Seeing none?
Okay, then I'll ask my question. So this will be high-density residential. Then what is the height limit?
Is it in the neighborhood?
Alan's got it open.
Okay. I'm looking at fourteen dot six oh six dot three hundred. High-density residential is fifty feet or sixty-five feet for a college/university for the max height.
Awesome, thank you. What's the setback? Pete wants to know the setback.
Twenty questions. You know, that's going to restrict a lot of the, of the heights because the site is not exactly a rectangle. It's fifteen for residents, twenty feet garage. Right, but just the layer of the land. There's some other stuff, yeah. And then it actually increases based off of the height above fifteen. So it's complicated. It's complicated.
Pardon any objections? The chair would like to close public testimony. Seeing none? Public testimony is closed. Planning Commission discussions, questions?
I guess just to be clear, I want to point out a couple of things. It's point six five miles to that division spot. You know, to division where there's high commercial areas and you can actually walk that through the neighborhood. You don't actually have to walk on Country Homes if that's your preference. And it's, it's a half a mile or less to the Evergreen Elementary School. So I might know there's, the current proposal's not for children to be living here, but grandkids could be staying and a close walk for them as well. So it seems again to meet those requirements and it's close to division and so forth. So I'm going to support this.
Sideline. It's also within a half mile of the cemetery too.
Hey, I love cemeteries. Cemeteries were actually originally conceived as a place, especially in America, to be parks. And so you know, it's another green open space and a space to visit your loved ones.
I'd, I'd like to add too that there's a shortage in our marketplace for all kinds of housing, but in particular for seniors. And senior housing is a very unique part of our culture and our fabric and our community. And they hire a lot of high school and college kids in their place of employment and they, they, I just we're a long way from behind where we need to be with this. And so I just think generally, we need this kind of housing. Any other comments?
Mr. Question. I think we have to, I think we have to make the motion first. I'll, I'll make, so I'll make the motion to recommend C P A zero five dash twenty-three for approval by the Board of County Commissioners.
And I second.
Moved and seconded?
Here's your moment, Pete. Call for the question.
Go ahead. Call for your question.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes five zero. What's next, sir?
Twenty-two oh two or
Oh, two.
One from last year.
Moving right along. No, no, we're, we're the bouncing call today.
Only if it's new math.
Just want to make sure everybody's paying attention on these long days. Okay, you all saw that, or most of you saw this last year. This is continued by the board from twenty twenty-two. This was formerly a hundred and eight acre mixed-use project. Obviously, the same site. It is now back before you with a much reduced footprint of thirty-eight acres, still requesting mixed use. And in, there's, there's this site, which you can better really clearly see the wetland images here. But what, what the applicant did, the prior site included this parcel. It went down to Thorpe, all of these parcels. And so what they've done is shrink this and, and the applicant can, can give a little more explanation was to provide essentially light industrial buffers around the mixed-use project. So again, this was found to meet at least criteria one and two for zoning code amendment. This is our only mixed-use project and it provides both opportunity, but also very little direction. The mixed-use category is, is very much wide open. However, it's, it is located near an interchange or, or an arterial, if you consider in interstates to be at least arterials. Transit corridor and it's, has proximity to the urban core. Somewhat near commercial services in terms of across the freeway. And while we say here it's within the normal service area for parks, there is not a specific open space directly accessible to this. In the parks analysis for the capital facilities plan, it is within the standard of three miles by road to a park. So this has, this has a number of
Just a minute. Of course. I'd like to officially open testimony.
Not yet.
We're not, you don't want to go first? You want to wait for the applicant?
I'm, I will finish this presentation.
Okay.
Then the applicant can come up and we can, we can do that. You can see a number of these. These have all been worked through over the past year or so, but they, these mitigations remain a significant lift for the project. And that's going to be part of our, our recommendation that you see coming on here in a minute. So in terms of the remand order, it required us to withdraw the C P A determinations in the past. That was completed. To redo that, a new C P A checklist was put together for the thirty-eight acre parcel. Required the county to conduct an environmental review. We did that on the binding site plan and the remand submittal materials with a new C P A checklist and the noise levels were examined. The state asked it for our baseline. We use the vacant site rather than the previous binding site plan. Futurewise Comment recommends the area, it, it, as you could see, it doesn't outright say, they, they deny it, but they say it should be evaluated in a broader planning process, much like a sub-area plan or even a master plan approach. That has also been the, the position of the city to a large degree. And we're, we're here today also to say though that this is, this is a site that has been designated light industrial for a number of years, at least a couple of decades. It has not moved forward with any of its appropriate land use, which is why we saw the opportunity last year to support a bigger, almost a small neighborhood size or a core of an emerging neighborhood out here. Now that it's, it's quite a lot smaller, it has, it has some of those other challenges. So we will be inviting the applicant up here. However, our, our proposed motion to the board is to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners continue this amendment for further consideration. At that point, Mr. Chair, you're welcome to open the public hearing and I know the applicant would like to speak.
So moved. Public testimony is now open on C P A oh two dash twenty-two and we'll hear from the applicant.
Member of the Planning Commission, I'm Dwight Hume. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the property. My address, nine one zero one North Mountain View Lane, Spokane. You have my yellow card there. Most of what the technical issues are for you to study are are part of what W C has added to the file concerning water, sewer and traffic. It is strange that we went from a hundred and eight acres of mixed use to thirty-eight and down to, I think, sixty-eight residential units. And the obligation to do a development agreement to further assure a mix of uses. And that had been echoed in the, the mix of uses had been acknowledged in our traffic report. Fire District is in support. Found this site and proposal can be met under their services. We've actually met on our site to talk about a new facility. And that's a very probable possibility due to the location that it puts for response to other areas in their district. Right now, they're a small two-rig, I think, facility on the north side of the freeway, accessible by Abbott Road and under the freeway. Cool District is School district is, uh, of course, uh. Saying that they're, they're overcrowded. Nonetheless. We've heard those stories for years from Mead and every other growing area of the county and its respective school districts. The problem they have. Isn't solved. With what you did last December to create direct concurrency. The nature of the beast is a bond. Voted on by its constituents. And that typically happens after years of enduring portables and other overcrowded conditions. That's how they get. Bonds passed and how they get schools built. Um. So there's nothing. That would happen without development and pressure to the schools. To expand and to be approved for future expansion by their constituents. If you, if you said, no, stop, this is not concurrent, we can't allow it to happen until they have the school space, it'll never happen. Because they'll never have the growth to create that pressure. Yeah, they have growth right now and they are responding to that. Similarly, water and sewer. Are issues that, um. Are for some reason now arguably, uh, deficient. If we were to come out of the ground and build this entire project next summer. We're not going to. And we're controlled by our future development agreement, controlled by, uh, the. Uh, capacity of then current utilities to accommodate us. And the development will be, uh, therefore implemented on a phase basis. Uh, as it gets integrated into those future utilities. It's, I said this before last year, it's sort of that chicken and egg thing, which comes first. If we waited. And did subarea planning. We wouldn't get anything done. We would be at the mercy of the availability of planners in these jurisdictions to budget the time to do that. Then the question becomes, well, what are we going to plan for, for the future? Well, never mind that, what about market forces? We have a shortage of housing. We have Amazon that came in on the West Plains. We have a site that is easily accessible to, uh, employment on the West Plains. And it should be acknowledged and accommodated. So. We would recommend that this be approved. Futurewise. Comments are again out of place. Uh, that's all theory, academia about. Uh, let's do some subarea planning and, uh. And then we'll decide what to do. They made the same comments on, on, on the, on the other application oh eight. And it just. Uh. Defies reasoning when you've got. Current activity of transition. To residential from light industrial, and this would be the request here. Uh, to. Say, let's stop and study it and see if in fact it shouldn't be industrial. That doesn't need to be done. The time is now, we've studied everything, we've effectively put in place with the MDNS. Conditions. A means by which it can be built out without impacts. To the infrastructure. Or to the schools. So we recommend that it be approved, and I would like, uh, Ben Goodmanson to, uh. Expand upon the issues of water, sewer and traffic, just so we have those bases covered. Thank you.
Any questions? Do we have any questions? Is the, the mission for Mr. Hume?
Hi, I have a question just for clarity. Uh. Mister Hume, I'm, I'm. I'm not opposed at all. To what you're referring to here. I am overly concerned still on traffic. There's some real transitions. Are they going to take place? Have we had any? Input that would cause, from the last time you were in front of us on this project, which was what, three, four, or five months ago? I- i- is there any encouragement is what I'm, I, that, that's a good word, a good encouragement.
Right. Right. The encouragement is Ben Goodmanson is here to speak on that.
Thank you.
Ben Goodmanson, Public Consulting Engineers, twenty one South Pines Road, Spokane Valley. Um, to answer your question on traffic. Um. This, uh, with the update that we have done with the reduction down to a thirty eight. Acre mixed use area, we have also decreased our intensity as far as traffic. We have decreased the volume. Of and or the number of trips anticipated with this. Uh, you may remember, uh, in the past year, we actually did a traffic impact analysis, a planning level traffic impact analysis that. Uh, analyzed the conditions in the year twenty forty five. Um, we did that analysis, we completed that analysis, um, for this, we updated the trip gen, it's going to be less trips, less impact. Uh, than what we reported with the traffic impact analysis. Um, but that was a good. Stepping point in terms of planning. Uh, from that analysis, we were able to identify some. Uh, potential failures within the system that, uh, DOT certainly had questions on, especially down at Thorpe Road. Uh, the questions of the Thorpe Road tunnels, these are all within the city of Spokane. Um, those questions have continued and development is being proposed right now and and are, and under application in the city of Spokane on on Thorpe Road. And they are analyzing those now as opposed to later. And working to answer those questions, connectivity in this region. Um. Is specifically a question. Uh, I don't have a mouse. Um. Thank you. I don't. We have, we have the property here, we have Abbott Road, we have Thorpe Road here connection. And we have Grove Road and the Wash Dot Roundabouts connecting here. Um, last time we were before on this, uh, proposal. The rent meter hadn't been fully installed here on the ramp. Um, which it is now active. Um, as that begins to meter, but really it became a question of connectivity. Um, within this. Larger area between this interface of the city of Spokane and Spokane County. Um. I believe it was, uh, two weeks ago that the city actually met, um. With the client, uh. For the development on Thorpe, and we, there was a great discussion on the access for this area and being able to connect. Um. And that's a starting point. To be able to work to find that connectivity that would relieve. Um. These stresses. What we've seen now is we have. Our low density residential, we have light industrial. We have people coming and going all the time. We don't have anybody that's there now and stays there. In their trip, the mixed use would allow for us to do that. To be able to run and go get a coffee, to go have a meeting somewhere or. Um, other amenity actually to live near the light industrial that, uh, is all surrounding. Thus, we would actually reduce our trips on the outer network. And that's just going to have to kind of prove itself over the years. Um. This area has not been highlighted very much, but it is, uh, continuing to grow. Um, hopefully that answers some of your questions on traffic.
I'm just overly concerned because again, we have good conversation, good words. Of discussion, but I'm always a person of action.
Mm-hmm.
And I would like to see some results, and I assume that, that these are, this would be one of the conditions. Subject to, I guess, that's my biggest concern I have. Because, yes, good intentions, but let's get some, uh, action that will have to happen.
Yes, action will certainly happen when the application is made and we have, uh, real numbers and real dollars to back them.
Any other questions? Ben?
I'm, I'm curious about the development agreement, so like in staff corps, it says that the development agreement would sort of dictate the number of units. But I'm curious if the development agreement also sort of specified this amount of open space, six or so acres, it's identified. A half acre for a coffee shop and one and a half acres for various other commercial uses. Um, is the development agreement going to be of that sort of speci- specificity, or is it just a commitment to a number of units?
Uh, let me clarify, the development agreement is with the city of Spokane for utility services. So that is a limitation and a rate. For the implementation so that, uh. The. Utilities that we have to go out and get and bring into the site. That that capacity is maintained. The water tower is being constructed, uh, now, the. Uh, Spokane International number four, I believe. That's being, uh, completed now with it to come online next year. So, uh, everybody's kind of been waiting for the twenty twenty four of this water line to be able to provide that volume. Um, Mister Whipple, when he was here last, uh, talked a lot in depth about the water situation in that region. And, um, not much has changed. Uh, we're a little bit farther down the road. Things have been built, things have been scheduled. And, uh, we still continue to work with the city of Spokane. And when we have an actual project, um, then we provide. A analysis of water, we have provided an analysis for sewer that is specific to the application that we have before us. We are still incomprehensive, we're still planning, we only have an idea or an estimation of what it would be. And we believe that we have been able to provide those numbers in a June first letter. Um, that was requested of us, and, uh. We believe those numbers match in now that we've kind of established what that process is. Uh, that was part of our difficulty last year is that it was all new to everybody. Um, but we've established what those numbers are, and we believe that those. Uh. Are agreeable and that they also support the capital facilities that we've talked about earlier, uh, this day.
Okay, but the development agreement will not, will not guarantee a mixed use necessarily. It, it really is just a. Commitment not to exceed a certain level of service with the city for water and sewer, is that right?
That is correct.
I'm. I need to. Get my arms around this transportation issue. It's kind of hard to think about what's going on in the city. With moratoriums on approved projects. City is now providing us. New congratulations for getting that worked out for your services. But. The traffic mitigation. Um. City. This isn't in the city, so they can't put a moratorium on it. What, what happens if? If the congestion or whatever, how, how is that dealt with? In, in, in any conditions that would be put on your project or that you're anticipating? I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Uh, it, it does. Um, from a traffic perspective, uh, one, we're not going to go and build it, as Dwight said, we're not going to build it next year, the whole thing, and all the traffic's going to just magically appear. This is going to take decades to. Build up and release. Traffic as, as needed. There are items in place, the, uh, Wash Dot Roundabouts have capacity of restraints on them, so those will, uh. Be a. Basically a closed bottleneck for traffic, so others will look for alternative routes. We have accessible to us the Garden Springs exit, which is located just up here to the north, um. And, uh, that Abbott and Garden Springs, there's the westbound ramp, off ramp, there's the Garden Springs exit that is. Uh, before the highway two exit, which actually goes, swings up and around and, uh, turns onto Russell Street. Both of those. Intersections were included in the traffic impact analysis that we did previously. In those with the project, with the more intense project. Those intersections remained at a good level of service. I reiterated that in a email, uh, previously, uh, that's part of a record. Um, because Wash Dot had that same question, so as. This develops and as this grows. We would see an increase in traffic at Grove Road that we would be anticipated. We may see some at Thorpe, but with the restrictions down on one ninety five. It's becoming more and more less, so we anticipate that the relief pressure for. This area for traffic, not only for this development, for this whole neighborhood, will be through the Garden Springs exit, the westbound ramp and the eastbound ramp at Russell Street.
So there's a solution and process.
There's a solution and process. What we see as traffic engineers and traffic planners is the. Need for more connectivity, more road connections, more means to facilitate. There are many, uh, public roads. Um, I mean, Abbott Road south of this project is a dirt road. And it only goes so far, but it doesn't connect into other roadways. So as more development comes, more public roads can come and make that connectivity and allow people to move more freely and less congested.
Mister Brock?
Uh, well, there, uh, commission, um, if I could, um. Uh, elaborate a little bit on what, uh, Mister Goodmanson was, uh. Discussing there. This particular proposal was shared with a number of transportation reviewing agencies who looked at this at a planning level. Based on the assumption that there would be a maximum of six hundred and forty eight residential units on that. And that's been written into a mitigated determination of non-significance for this proposal that's been. Signed by the county and signed by the applicant. And that was included in the link that was attached to your materials today, and. It contains many conditions identified by these transportation areas at a planning level. That will form the basis of. Site-specific project-level SEPA mitigations in the future, should this project be, or this project, this amendment be approved. And so that MDNS includes conditions from. Washington State Transportation Department of Transportation, the Spokane County Public Works Department, the City of Spokane. It includes domestic water, uh. Um, provision mitigation, which is fairly extensive, outlines specific approval, approval, uh, improvement projects that would likely be required. It includes specific sewer mitigation projects. Um, there's also mitigation measures, uh. Pro- proposed by the building and planning department on a title notice for proximity to light industrial uses. Uh, notification that there is, uh, already an identified wetland on this project, it has a wetland mitigation plan that's been approved by. Um. The Corps of Engineers and Department of Ecology, that any future development on the site would have to, uh. Um, abide by or or modify through the, um, correct procedural processes. There's a requirement in that MDNS for a archaeological survey and report by the, uh. Um, State Department of, uh, Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Um, there is a requirement in. The MDNS for a title notice for an navigation easement for the, uh, airport. Um, there is a notification in that MDNS that this site is in a Aoz five, which is the least restrictive. Of the airport overlays, but it does still have a density limit of a hundred and eighty persons per acre. Which is. A little difficult to get to, but it is nevertheless there, and we are not notifying everyone that that is present. And there is. An agreed to residential density limit, the applicant has proposed, the county has acknowledged, our SEPA analysis was based on that. And a future developmental agreement will cite that as the, um. The, um, limiting factor on this site, it has six hundred and forty eight residential units. So.
Thank you.
With. Question is with the. What's in front of us today, how will that change the rest of the fifty some odd acres of being developed? And in what way will it be changing it?
How it would change the remainder of the property that was considered?
Yes.
Good question. I don't see that it would change, we still have an approved BSP for under light industrial. What it would change is. We can now have residents. Directly across the street or some distance away within walking distance of that light industrial improvements. We don't. We don't know who's going to develop the light industrial. There are many uses and and many different. Uh. It can be used for storage, it can be used for warehousing, it can be even used for light manufacturing. Um, but how, how does that change? From a traffic perspective, is that we have the potential to reduce the volume of vehicles on the. Major roads on the, on the I ninety, on the arterials by having closer mixed use development that's at a higher density.
Mr. Hume?
Thank you. Uh, the question is, what are we gonna do with the rest of the remaining light industrial? Which surrounds the donut hole of mixed use. And there the light industrial zone, as you know, allows commercial. It allows uh and and within that commercial zone, there's a couple of uses that would complement uh and be appropriate to that site. For example, between our mixed use going south to the existing uh Wemco and Odom uh projects, which are industrial and in place. We would put uh essentially many uh uh, what am I trying to say? Many storage units and parking. Because when we go mixed use and go vertical and we go smaller than a uh a yard with a house on it, uh, there's a need for that storage and there's a need for the additional parking. And that's what we anticipate to put as a transitional buffer to our mixed use along that south boundary. Along the freeway, we find that that would be an appropriate place, but subject to uh a conditional use permit approval. They put uh RV uh overnight camping. Uh, it's uh right there in proximity to the freeway, it's visible, it's easy to get to. There's bound to be a little bit of of land left over that's light industrial and a small use could go in there on that. Currently, as you know, we're fifty nine binding site plan lot uh industrial lots instead of mixed use or anything else, so.
I have a curious question. How did you arrive at thirty eight acres?
Um, I picked up my phone and I heard from my client.
Yeah. I guess I was trying to understand, there's got to be some theory behind the amount of acre.
Well, there is. I I didn't mean to be so smart about that, but the actual uh what I just explained to you is a buffering use uh from Wemco of of mini storage and parking would fit uh dimensionally uh in a nice uh north-south dimension to where we would put our mixed use in. And so that's why that's there. Uh, we've got wetlands uh that have already been studied and established and that sort of thing. Um, so by the time you get that in place and then look at uh what's an appropriate use the RV along the on the on the freeway, voila, you end up with this net area that uh is usable and fronts on Abbott. And also has access and is required to have access out to Grove and out down south to Thorpe between uh Odom. So um, it just a net uh response to those other types of periphery uses.
Thanks. Any other questions for the applicants?
Well, she's checking for that. I wanted to add one comment. The proposed motion for further consideration isn't necessary. You just heard from Robert Brock, the MDNS is a laundry list of performance conditions. The development agreement that you were wondering about, that does uh assure that there will be a mix of uses. Because the mixed-use zone right now doesn't say it has to be, it can be a single use. So that's what we're willing to put in place.
Is there a draft of this development agreement or something like that? Cause cause I guess that's that's kind of where I'm stuck, right? I I think what makes this pro- proposal work better is that there's a buffer. But there's no, the the buffer is outside of the site that we're talking about, and so could a development agreement give some clarity to what that buffer is gonna look like? Cause that was what the SEPA was appealed for is, you know, a buffer to make sound and seems like if we're just gonna allow light industrial uses still right up to the edge of this, the underlying issue remains. And so a development agreement about a buffer would help. But even more importantly, so many of the calculations and sort of um thoughts about trips and internal trips is based on the mixed use. And so for me to feel comfortable, I I feel like I I need to see some sort of agreement that there will be mixed use and we are just gonna end up with a bunch of residential. And so that's what is currently making me uncomfortable. I feel like continuing it offers the opportunity to continue to work those things out. And so that's currently where I'm at. Interested if you have anything to help clarify that.
Well, staff had asked us to um um mention items that would be appropriate in the development agreement. Procedurally, a development agreement doesn't normally occur until a subsequent time after your mixed-use uh amendment to the comp plan is approved. And as as uh you probably know, that's an a an agreement that reviewed by planning and then acted on by the county commissioners, signed by the applicant or owner of the property. We therefore were advised, you know, make it broad in terms of topics. Yeah, if you wanna say the buffering, um I question why we would do that because right now, if we all walk away and say, no, you don't get to do this, then there's a hundred and eight acres of industrial. And if we wanted to impose upon ourselves industrial use versus what I just talked about as a transitional related use, mini storage, parking, RV, that sort of thing. So what? That's kind of on our ticket as to whether or not we want to coexist next to industrial. Um, and that was the argument in the first hearing. But so Clyde, you were wondering about something?
Well, I I really agree with what Logan is saying is that um I've I've I'm not opposed to what you're proposing here, I'm, but it's a continuation of the blank space around it. We got the donut hole covered now. What are we gonna do with the rest of the stuff around there? And I do feel there should be a condition attached to it with recommendation. And again, I know that in the original presentation, Scott said this would be a continuation of where we're at. But I'm gonna say it should be even a continuation approval as it goes step by step beyond today. Because I'm I I know that's long-range planning, but I think that's what we're here for. I really do believe that.
Well, we're here to entertain a site-specific amendment to the comp plan resulting in zones. Okay, you know that. But what uh if this body wants to add uh topics to be addressed, not necessarily required, but to be addressed in the development agreement, we're open to that.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I just ask like a clarifying question from Scott or staff? Just what is exactly, does a continuation in this um sense mean and what would be the next steps if we voted to continue it? Does it still go to the Board of County Commissioners for them to decide if it should be continued? And then if so, what from there?
Uh, the first part is straightforward. If the commissioners accept and agree to your recommendations and your recommendation included this project being continued, then it would be continued. And we did not put a specific date on this, like it doesn't have to be immediate. The question is always is is we we are entertaining a twenty twenty four round of comp plan amendments. Those will be in the usual cycle. Now, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. I'll defer to Jessica on whether a continued project has to stay in the new cycle or whether it could be taken up at a different time.
It would have to stay in the in the in a cycle with all of the other annual comp plan amendments.
Which is, which is how long?
So it would be ta- if it was done next year, it would be another year away. Probably we'd be back here this time next year.
Do we have any other testimony from the applicant? If not, we'd go to the public. No hands raised? Those lips? Um, I'd Chair would move to close public testimony. Any objection to that? Go to discussion.
And uh, Mr. Chair, if I might recommend that we go into executive session under the Open Public Meetings Act forty-two thirty-one one zero one I, so we can talk about pending and potential litigation on this item, so that I can inform the board or the Planning Commission before you take a a motion and vote.
I like that idea. I don't know about the rest of the board, but.
Yeah, I moved that we go into executive session for briefing attorney on pending legal issue.
Okay. And so in order to do that, uh, Mr. Chair, what we would do is we would announce the Planning Commission would be present there. The attorney for the Planning Commission, Jessica Pilgrim, would be present there. And then um we would have Scott Chesney and Mr. Chesney, what who of your team would you like to be in?
Mr. Brock.
Uh, Mr. Brock, and then um we will, um, we can commence that at, it looks like it's about eleven forty-seven, and I anticipate it'll take five minutes. So we would readjust about five minutes from eleven forty-seven, eleven forty-eight.
We expel the ones that are in here that aren't us.
Correct. Everyone who was not announced would leave, and then we will re-
And let's let's pair this with a bathroom break and let's just set eleven fifty-five then. It's like our, we re- return time.
Okay, that works.
As moved as um counsel. So do we need to have a motion?
We don't need a motion for executive.
Great. Great.
I
Planning Commission is now back in session.
Correct, and we extended the E session for, um, one minute, I believe, past our original fif- eleven fifty-five time. So, Mr. Chair, I believe where we had left off was, um, you were, I think we were waiting on a motion and then a second, and then discussion on this item.
We've closed public comment from what I recall, so we're to the motion.
I thought we did, yeah.
Yeah, I think we closed it. So I, I will make a motion to, can, uh, to recommend that CPA zero-two dash twenty-two be continued by the Board of County Commissioners.
I second that.
Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Again, I just, I just like to be clear about why I'm voting the way I am. I think I was pretty clear that I just, I feel like it's just not quite there yet. There's a lot of planning issues, the, the list of mitigation is long, um, it's hard for me to have the vision. Um, and so at this time, I think, you know, not rejecting this proposal, but think that we need to continue it, to keep working on it, um, to, to figure out how this, uh, mixed use, um, thirty-eight acres makes sense, especially in the larger context of not just this site and the surrounding site, but also hopefully, um, an even bigger look at, um, this particular area.
Um, I would like to hear what my colleagues on the Planning Commission have to say about this. I would like to hear our discussion. I don't know about continuing it for further consideration. I don't feel like this, this particular proposal or application is ready to have a land use and zoning change, um, particularly in light of the rest of them that we're considering out in this area. And, um, so that's, that's where I'm leaning, but I'm open to hearing my colleagues.
There's a saying among the development community about decision makers getting to yes or getting to no. And my concern is if this is something that maybe should happen, we ought to figure out how to get to yes, as opposed to getting to no. And with, if we don't get to a yes, that gives the land user, the landowner a realistic goal that he can achieve. Have we done our job? That's, that's my question, and so i- i- if, if we continue this, um, I, I was surprised frankly at this progress they made getting a lot of these DNRs, the, the, or the, um, the, like the water and the sewer, I mean, they, they've, they and the decision makers and the governments busted their butt to get close. There's still some issues, but I, I, my, my, my thought is, is that if we do a continuance, does that give them the framework to get to yes, so they can then go ahead and build this project? Because we, we need housing, we need a lo- lot of this stuff, maybe the timing is wrong, I don't know that, but, but, uh, um, I, I'd like to see us try to get to a solution that gives the landowner the right to move forward with some certainty. I, I, I don't know if that's feasible in the continuance, but that's, that's just my thought. It's easy to put it off, I guess is what I'm saying.
Procedurally, uh, Mr. Chair, if, if the motion to continue is adopted, uh, the project stays alive, and they don't have to start over. If the mo- if the motion is to, uh, reject or deny, it take, it, it's a final decision, and they can't even start to reapply for at least a year. So that would put them firmly into the twenty-six comp plan update cycle.
You know, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I think back twenty years ago when we, or how many years ago, two oh three, I guess that's twenty. Uh, when we looked at growth management, we all shook our head and we all said, man, what a challenge in front of us. And we're here today again, what a challenge in front of us. But I think a continuation of this study is going to cause us to come up with the right answer. And I believe in that, and I enjoy the challenge. And I think that that is the correct way that we need to be looking at here today. I really feel that we need to be look, because we're going to cause things to happen by continuing this discussion.
Any other comments, thoughts?
I just, I, I guess my final thought is, is to me, meeting a crisis in the, and we're talking about the housing crisis, um, you, you can't meet that crisis by creating another crisis.
That's correct.
So that's kind of where I'm at, is, this is that's where I'm at.
Question, Mr. Director. We haven't committed ourselves to anything by extend, by continuing this.
That's correct.
And so the, the, the challenge, if I'm the landowner, do I want halitosis or no breath at all? I think I want halitosis. But, but that's, I mean, if we give them that opportunity, they know what the challenges are, they've got to meet those challenges. Uh, so that's, that's, to say no, it means there's no breath at all, and that, um, and some of these creative challenging solutions are not going to be codified until they're presented. We're, 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 we're both a planning and a reactive organization.
But, Mr. Chairman, you know, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I do like progress, it's very important. But we've got some joint planning because of the infrastructure that is going to have to be given to this particular project. And I feel that there has been some open, I haven't had an answer for some of my questions in my mind, how is it going to be handled with the joint planning? And, and, and what is going to happen with the, uh, the, the, there's just a lot of questions I have, and at this particular point, and I want to challenge a developer to come back with a master plan on this thing, if that's necessary, whatever, something. Because I, as I said, we had the donut in the middle, the donut hole filled, but what are you going to do with the rest of it? I want to know what's going to happen.
And so just to clarify, the, if it's similar to our schedule this year, um, applicant, if they continue to pursue this, would have an opportunity to come back in the spring, when we would first review our slate of applications for next year. And then we would go through our regular process like we've done this year, have a workshop, and then ultimately a hearing. And this one would be included, along with any new ones we pick up.
Yes, that would be correct, and that's, uh, the board has directed, uh, planning staff to, uh, to entertain a twenty-twenty-four cycle, so this would flow right into that. There is still no decision on whether there will be a twenty-five cycle, because it's, it's so close to what we need to be doing for the twenty-six update. It seems like a really, you know, inefficient approach. But they are looking at a twenty-four cycle, and to be clear about that, projects on the twenty-four cycle are limited to those that improve increased residential housing stock. And so the mixed-use project would fit into that, i- in my opinion.
I call the question. The motion was recommend CPA zero-two dash twenty-two be continued by the Board of County Commissioners.
For further consideration. I think I's-
Yeah, it was already moved and seconded, so now, and the vote has been, or the question has been called, so you just take a vote. Yes, that, that works just fine. We left it open-ended just so that we could take it next year. And the one difference, also just to address somebody's question earlier, you won't see it come back for initiation, because it's already been initiated, so it would just continue.
So we'll likely first see something again about it in a workshop, or maybe a special item on an agenda to address this, uh, at some point next.
That's correct.
Yes. Okay.
Lunch? Okay. Six, CPA six dash twenty-three. We're, we're back in, on track. And, and, uh, Ella can bring up my slides, and we're running away. Lots to do today. Thank you. Now, Plan Amendment number six, uh, is in the, uh, southeast area of the city of the valley, in the Valley UGA. Uh, you can see the site in this location. It is essentially filling in a previously zoned multifamily site, uh, with, from a, a single-family or LDR site, it's eleven acres. Uh, you can see the air, uh, the providers, uh, up there. Aerial shows emerging development to the west and to the southwest, and then immediately to the west of Highway twenty-seven is a plat that was processed a couple of years ago for single-family development, uh, but you can also see much smaller lots, much higher density than some of the other development around the, uh, the environs. Staff has shown that this meets the two basic criteria for moving an amendment forward. Multifamily goals you've seen before, uh, in this one, the near determination, it is near and directly southeast of the commercial center, at twenty-seven and thirty-second Ave. Uh, thirty-second Ave is considered a principal arterial, arterial. It's near open space, uh, you know, less than a quarter of a mile. Now, it is, uh, filling in a compatible zoning category with its neighbors. Uh, it does have access to bus and sidewalks. Traffic mitigation is the sole concern by the city of the valley, the county, and Washdott. Uh, our criteria, was it given appropriate notice? Yes, uh, same as before, twenty-one days publishing. Fifteen days prior, notice mailed to property owners, signed, posted on the site. Is it consistent with the plans? Yes, uh, underutilized lands, higher density uses. Uh, there are no new mitigations on this, and it's an owner-initiated amendment, so there is no taking. Concurrent analysis shows no loss of service. No public comments were received. And our recommendation, or our suggested motion is simply to recommend Board of County Commissioners' approval of the amendment. You're welcome to open the public hearing.
I, I believe he's online, Mr. Chairman. I believe he's attending virtually, so he should be online. John, could you, uh, if you're in the meeting, could you raise your, yeah, there is, could you raise your hand, and we'll let you speak?
Go ahead.
Hello?
There we go.
Go ahead, John.
Good afternoon, uh, thank you, Commissioners, um. So, yeah, we're proposing a um, which, as Mr. Teddy said, is surrounding our, our parcel. Um, we're fronting on both Thirty-second Avenue and Highway twenty-seven. Um, transit stop, uh, down on Thirty-second Avenue, um, possibly uh, so kind of be on the lot. Um, park is approximately twenty-seven miles to the west on Thirty-second Avenue. And, uh, Central Valley School District, um, has commented that they have capacity. So, um, that's kind of it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I had one question again, I, I didn't quite hear the answer of, the traffic is going to be brought down to where? How to, the ingress and egress of this, of the project?
So the egress, ingress, egress on Thirty-second Avenue is, um, yeah, I don't know how to shoot my screen here on Zoom. Um, is, uh, right at center of the MBR lot to the north. Basically, on Thirty-second Avenue, and then on Highway twenty-seven is even, um, just about the middle of MBR, uh, there we go, um. I don't know if you can see my cursor. Uh, is that, yeah, so you can see the existing apartments to the north. Uh, yeah, right at center in there, ninety-ten, there's ingress there, that then goes up the hill to our lot. And then off of Highway twenty-seven, there's the ingress, egress with the road that goes up, uh, basically along the west side of our parcel, of ninety-one sixty.
And if I can, if I can just jump in, Sagan, for the, the record, it, one of the conditions of approval from Washdott was to update their approach permit for the, the, uh, ingress, egress onto Highway twenty-seven.
Well, that was my concern, because you got three hundred more homes being dropped on that exact same spot on Highway twenty-seven, so that's why I was wondering
Yeah.
where it's going to be brought in, and is that evergreen that he's going to take it out to? Thirty-second and evergreen, is that, is that correct?
But, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we're just less than that, saying that. Ingress, existing ingress, egress, it's just less than evergreen.
You can kind of see the current in- in- ingress, egress there, it's, it's just like maybe half, halfway between the, yeah, go a little bit left of there, Scott, right, right there, you see it, it's, yeah, that's it, right there, that's the ingress, egress.
Thank you, Logan.
So, are those, is ingress, egress, silly question, maybe, public roads then?
No, they would be private internal networks, yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Uh, not of the applicant, but I was wondering what was the open space that we were pointing to that was a half a mile away? I'm not doubting, I'm just curious, I don't know this area as well.
It's called Brown's Park. Um, it's west Highway twenty-seven. It's approximately twenty-seven miles directly west.
Okay, yeah, I see, thank you.
Yeah, it's, I think it's across the street from University High School.
Yeah, I see that, and then the high school's there as well, with all of its playfields and, um, stuff. So is that also, is this a high school? Also have the middle school right next to it as well, is that what that is? Okay, gotcha.
I believe it's just University High School, the, there's, there is a junior high school, Horizon, which is further south.
And I'll just also point out that the building on the corner there is, is commercial, but not only commercial, but actually a grocery store, so, um, other stuff, but maybe some hope that there's some internal trips here to the grocery store and things like that.
Yes.
There's also a walking path on the east side of the Highway twenty-seven right-of-way that runs north and south.
Mr. Chairman, anybody from the public? Any other questions? No further questions for, for the applicant? Do we have any other speakers? Had moved to close to public testimony?
Without objection.
No objections? Let's go to discussion. Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Specific wording. All right, I make a motion to recommend that Board of County Commissioners to approve CPA zero-six dash twenty- All right, I make a motion to recommend that Board of County Commissioners to approve CPA zero six dash twenty three.
Second, somewhere?
I'll second it.
Second by Clyde.
You guys are happy with how I worded that, that works, okay, it's a little different from what's up there.
Clyde, you're thinking.
Well, I'm thinking because I just live up the hill from the whole thing and and I'm just concerned about the traffic. That's really where I'm at, the ingress and egress, we've already got tons of traffic problems right there in that area. And are there other conditions or?
Yeah, there are, so actually, so there's, there are conditions to upgrade. The state gave the condition to upgrade their approach onto Highway twenty seven. The city of Public Works gave a little bit more generic comment, but they basically said the applicant will have to contribute to affected intersections. And then the state actually, or the state, the city of the valley actually gave specific amounts that they would have to contribute to sixteenth and Highway twenty seven. So, yeah, so thirty second and sixteenth were both analyzed as well as the approach onto Highway twenty seven.
You're you're right, Chairman, there is a specific impact fee lined out or or I don't know if impact fees are the right word. They say a voluntary mitigation fee is what the city of the valley calls it.
Will that also affect then on at thirty second? What is the condition on that one?
The Public Works Department had a little bit more vague, without, Logan, are you looking at the document? Did Public Works, I'm having a little second guessing myself here, I'll pull it over to you.
Because thirty second at that point is the road that was put in there sixty years ago, and it and that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so Spokane County Public Works had a little bit more vague of a of a comment, but they asked for prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall contribute to the necessary or to the intersections affected by the proposal's traffic. And I think the Public Works Transportation Team is basically going to ask for something similar to what the valley asked for is when they know exactly how many units there will ultimately be, where they will be going, they will ask for more specific contributions where the city provided that at this stage.
I see that it appears to meet all of the baseline requirements on UL two sixteen. I would suggest that we move forward with the the proposal or the.
Which is motion?
To close the question.
Yeah. Close the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Close. Motion passes five zero. Shall we, is there lunch here yet, or should we just go to the next item? Why don't we start? Go, okay. CPA oh seven twenty three.
Yeah, I make recommendation, we work right on.
Yeah, we can work through lunch.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta.
We've got people that are going to have to leave, we're going to lose her. Okay, we're on seven. West Plains again, northern part of West Plains, low density to medium density. You can see medium density already to the north, low density immediately to the east, but also high density residential on the corner. More lower density here, so it's surrounded by existing residential use. And this is a density increase, not a change from low light industrial. You can, the photo here shows essentially undeveloped land and the cri- and the context. The staff finds it meets criteria one and two. Medium density residential has the criteria need of good access to arterial roads. Is it located near commercial? And it's about a mile southeast, and the site is near open space of actually half a mile within the normal service area for parks. CIPA, MDNS, pretty much what we come to know on these projects on the West Plains, traffic mitigation and archaeological study. Was it publicly properly noticed? Yes, same as the others. Is it consistent? Yes. Is there a taking? No, owner initiated, the concurrency analysis shows no degradation of level of service. No comments were received for this. Our suggested motion is to approve the amendment. You're free to open public testimony. So moved, do we have an applicant? Oh, we do, Mr. Hume.
Dwight Hume, on behalf of the owner of the property. You have my yellow slip and information. I've reviewed the staff report and presentation today and concur. Agree with everything that been said. It's just an extension of his existing project that's underway right now, a two hundred and sixteen unit apartment. And this would be a future phase of that. Access to it is is adequate, as is utilities, so. Anyway.
You're done? Any questions of the applicant?
We have another, do you want us to?
Unless you have a traffic question, Ben's here for that, but.
Do we have any public testimony? Anybody signed in online or?
Nobody have their hand raised.
Last call, anyone else wanting to testify on this subject? If not, we'll close public testimony. Go to discussion, planning commission.
He, I, did I understand this is adjacent to an existing multifamily complex?
Of zoning. Yeah, let me run back to the the zoning map. This is the subject parcel, immediately north of that, it is currently zoned for multifamily or medium density.
Is it being built on now or is it just zoning?
You can see it's still on this photo, which is, I think, a twenty two photo is vacant.
I can address that. Yeah, the parcel to the north here does have an active multifamily development project on it currently.
Okay.
And that's the owners, the applicant today before is, has purchased this property. In two thousand twenty, this body and the board approved the two hundred and sixteen unit site now under construction.
Well, the same access for this new proposal be the same as the old or or what?
No, actually, no, the the old one fronts on.
Whatever, Garden Springs.
Yeah, but this one, picture it this way, the the existing two sixteen is.
Ben is behind you.
Ben's behind you.
Oh, okay, we'll let Ben talk.
It's hard for him to sneak up on somebody, but you did.
Since I was the applicant in the twenty twenty application for the medium density residential, this under current construction, it has frontage on Abbott Road as well as on Garden Springs exit or Garden Springs Road. And we would anticipate with this development, it has its frontage along Abbott Road and also Windsor. I keep trying to call it something else, but it has that access and we don't anticipate that the it would be required to run through the current construction. There may be some connectivity that they would prefer between the developments. That's really up to the client. With this one, it does have full access and it does have a, as I recall, the sewer utility is meant going through it at the north side that is the main trunk line for the city of Spokane.
I'll make a motion, I move to recommend CPA seven twenty three to the Board of County Commissioners for approval of this amendment.
Sir, second? So moved, so moved. Discussion? Motion?
For me, this one, I guess I'll just say it's, I'm, you know, cautious about the West Plains amendments, but future wise, didn't identify this one that they were concerned about. So I appreciate that. Also, it's basically adjacent already to an MDR and really close to an HDR. It's as close to the freeway really as as possible, I'm going to be supporting this one.
I would say that my concerns for this project out on the West Plains is similar to all the other ones that joint planning needs to be conducted before we keep on approving and approving and approving. Cheney School Districts noted that they are over capacity. This will further exacerbate that problem. And Washdott indicates, or the city indicates as well, that continuing to use Abbott Road for access is continuing to put more pressure on it. Development needs to pay its way when it develops, that's what I would say, so.
Any other comments? Call for a vote? Those in favor, say, signify by saying aye. Aye. Closed? Passes four to one. What's next, sir? Mr. Chairman, CPA eight on your screen, still in our West Plains, a little bit further south. And this is also adjacent to one of the, that was the intention of CPA fifteen that we'll get to in a little bit. These parcels are next to an existing low density residential, another here, and urban reserve outside of the urban growth area to the east, predominantly vacant land, with the exception of this platted part of Aspen Park to the south. The criteria meets criteria one and two, the project rather meets criteria one and two. Low density residential is different than medium or high density residential, so it's located in in the urban growth area, one of the joint planning areas. And then urban services are available at the site. A number of MDNS conditions, water and sewer, both city of Spokane, traffic issues from DOT and Public Works. And then some other ones all the way down to Cheney schools that Ms. Woodstruck had noted. Was it appropriately noticed? Yes, we've made those. Through those all now, the underutilized lands aspect. And no degradation of levels of service was anticipated. Futurewise did comment, excuse me, on this. And and there's was simply that it has has been noted here that it should be considered as part of a more robust planning process, whether subarea plan or or some other part of that. And there's certainly a big typo there, twenty seventeen should be twenty twenty six, periodic update. Our comment is it's sometimes misleading to those that look at this from the outside. And let me just go back again without making everybody airsick. There, the vacant lands are in one place, but this is sort of, it's a very low density area at the end of the urban growth area. It has residential planned there, it has residential planned here. And even though it looks like an industrial thing in between, this is platted in the time when residential was allowed in the light industrial classification. And so it's, all of this is sort of emerging in its own residential way along this backside. And these are, our spotted road is far enough away. This probably has more utility or higher and best use, if you will, in a residential category than it does holding it for holding it for industrial. And so we don't see this as having a negative impact on light industrial. And while it may not be ideal in the world of our comprehensive plan, it is at least logical and therefore consistent with the comp plan. Our recommended motion is approval and that we would welcome opening a public hearing. So moved. And our applicant? Imagine that.
Hi there, Dwight Hume again, for the record, I represent the partnerships that have included their properties in this. As you can see in the map, the yellow that adjoins to our southwest is an action that this body and the board approved last year from light industrial to residential. And so it goes without saying that, hey, what are you doing? Let's do that too, and that's exactly how the phone call came in and I started working on it. I reviewed everything and certainly agree with the recommendation that this be approved. I'm not concerned about the comments from future wise. As Scott alluded to, this is not a sacrifice of light industrial, and it should be clear that like other areas south of I ninety in the industrial zone, nonetheless, they've got platted when you could do that. And what you saw and what you see there is market forces being able to play themselves out. And there's no warehouses, there are houses and nice subdivisions. Incidentally, there's also an apartment project on Spotted that if you follow your eye down Spotted on the, to the slightly margin of that image. You have an apartment project under construction. Why can't this thing do that there, right there? That's apartments. So we certainly are a part of the theme of residential development there, thank you.
Ben?
Ben Goodman, some local consulting engineers. Having done the traffic, trip generation distribution letter for this and having done the fifty seventh and Doughty that was approved last year, I wanted to emphasize that we didn't see a lot of traffic impacts to this. This project is anticipated to contribute to Thorpe and Grove Roundabout when it comes around. And I did want to talk a little bit about Cheney School District has been bringing up sidewalks and safer routes to travel in this area on various projects. Fifty seventh and Doughty is actually under application right now. We had hoped to be the hearing by now, but we had to jump through some more hoops with DOE and we should be on our way to hearing here in the next month. So that is a residential subdivision. It was approved last year, application this year, and moving forward for development. One thing that I wanted to note, is there a larger map? Not really, okay. No. No. All right, well, I'll just deal with what I got. Okay, here underneath the big map is a project called Holly Road. That subdivision is working its way to hearing as well. With Holly Road, we anticipate that we'll actually be able to make a pedestrian connection between Aspen Park, fifty seventh Avenue. Make a pedestrian connection to Holly Road, providing that connection to Snowden Elementary, which is located directly down south, south on Holly Road and Halat Road. So we believe that with this development, that the infrastructure will be there by the time this comes to fruition. That that safe route to travel for the kids, for Aspen Park and for fifty seventh and Doughty, that all that is starting to come into place as we move forward and march forward. Any questions?
Questions with applicant? Any other public comments, anybody calling in on us or?
Nobody has their hand raised.
Any other testimony from the audience? Seeing none, propose to close testimony? Seeing no objection, testimony is closed, comments from the planning commission?
I make a motion that the, that we recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve CPA zero eight dash twenty three.
Recommended by Nolan, second?
I'll second, second by Clyde.
Discussion?
I mean, this one's tough, trying to balance the city's comments from our initiation phase that talked about sort of looking at all of these West Plains amendments collectively. And I just voted yes on one of these West Plains amendment, West Plain amendments. And so I'm a little torn on this one, there are originally six amendments proposed, and only two of those are being asked to be moved forward today. And so feels like the cumulative impact is significantly lower than. feels like the cumulative impact is significantly lower than the city, at least where the city's initial comments come from. I understand that the underlying issue of, of joint planning still hasn't occurred. But I'm hopeful that that's headed in the right direction. Yeah, I'm a little bit torn on this one. Interested to hear what other commissioners have to say.
Any other comments on the motion?
The only comment I have is I look at the M N D S or M D N S conditions set forth on this. It's pretty similar to, oh gosh, what was that, zero two twenty-two? And it's, I'm glad to see they're moving this one forward. I think it's interesting that there's similar numbers of conditions, but a much different recommendation and I guess it's not entirely clear to me why that is. But I don't see reason not to move forward on this.
Melissa?
Yeah, similarly to my other West Plains comments. This is in need of a joint planning area that should be conducted ahead of time so that these can be considered comprehensively. And what, what's happening out in the West Plains is on city sewer and water, there's going to have to be significant in infrastructure improvements in order to make that happen, but that's on the applicant developer, whatever, but inevitably we're looking at a system-wide issue with water and sewer out on the West Plains and I, I guess going down the road in, in the wrong direction is still going down the road in the wrong direction. So I can't see moving it forward. I can see waiting till twenty twenty-six when we, when the comp plan is updated. And that's where I'm at on all this development out that's being sought after. There's obviously pressure for it. So let's get the joint planning done or put it into the comp plan and update cycle.
Any other comments? Call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed?
Aye.
Is that a three to two? Three to two. Motion passes three to two. What's next, sir?
CPA eleven twenty-three, we're back on the north side where we've been for a couple of years. On the Hastings-Farwell corridor. And we're, we're overworking our clerk today.
She's probably hungry.
Yeah, we, hopefully that will show up momentarily. You will probably remember some of these parcels from the last couple of years. This is the merging corridor. The subject parcel again is filling in or what we normally just call site assembly, creating a bigger development site. The providers are listed. This multifamily project is, is in and built, adding this piece into it. Still the single-family development along Farwell and to the west. With the, at least this project entering down here onto Hastings. Again, this meets criteria one and two. Multifamily has to again hit those elements from two sixteen. It has good access to Hastings Road. It is certainly near commercial areas, about a third of a mile east of the commercial corridor. Transit service exists, same distance. And what we've seen over these last years, the area is emerging as a increased density area along Hastings and Farwell Road, at least Farwell a little bit further to the east. It's, it is near within half a mile of open space. And so it, in our mind, it meets those categories. Water concurrency is the issue, again, similarly to what we saw last year with projects in this area. It did, it did receive appropriate public notice. The proposal is otherwise consistent with the plan. It is an owner-initiated agreement, therefore no taking. And it does not, you know, analysis shows there is no degradation of levels of service. One comment from the public about increases in noise and traffic. And you can see here the review, Public Works and DOT identifying no deficiencies based on the development cost itself, or I'm saying the development intensity itself. We have no other observations at this time. We welcome opening a public hearing.
For the water concurrency, I just want to clarify that so that's not fully analyzed or it was analyzed and they said that there is going to need to be improvements, it's just not identified?
Well, I, I think I think, I guess when we, Water District Three last year had source capacity issues, they didn't have enough, enough water right to provide service in the area.
For this particular site, or you just mean on like the, on this road, sorry, on?
Well, I think for this particular service area, Water District Three is big. They serve the valley, they're, they consolidated a bunch of, of previous water districts into one. So they have these service areas that are actually in different parts and not each service area has source capacity constraints some do. From what we've learned through the past two years of processes with these applications in the Water District Three service area that's up north, they had source capacity issues. They have since solved the source capacity issues, but they may have transmission issues in the past. And I guess how staff is viewing this mitigation is to just ensure that there's concurrent water supply at the time of permit, no matter what.
Okay, so you're, what I've heard you say is at one point it sounded like you said legal water access. I didn't hear you repeat that. It sounds like it's perhaps a physical supply, pumping stations, things like that.
Yeah, it's not necessarily the water rights that they own, it's the, how do they get it to your site?
Okay, all right. And that's still, there wasn't specific mitigation or limitations that were identified, it's just, and we're not really sure yet.
Yeah, and it's just also reiterating that concurrent water supply is going to be required for permit approval.
Thank you.
Any other testimony? Do we have an applicant? Ben?
Sure. We're good.
Go fast, everybody wants to leave. So this is my last one for the day. So I have provided a letter as before, wanted to thank staff for their staff report. It was very thorough. Been here before. Once again, the map of the area and the amenities that are available within this region. Mr. Kylo, in his comments, that he is correct that this is intended to complete or add to the existing high-density development next door to the east. This zero point five five acres is an isolated lot that only has access through an easement through a property to the south. That property to the south is also in this, under the same ownership and we would anticipate that those two properties would be developed concurrently into a similar high-density apartment park, complex. Did the trip generation distribution letter kind of gives an idea of what could be developed there with the point five five acres, can't really do a whole lot with it now. We, with the zone change, then having matched zones, then we could be a little more flexible on what we would do in design. And that's why we're here today. Meeting their policies and goals, we are on an arterial of Hastings Road. We are within commercial entities and also park entities. As stated in the comp plan, comprehensive plan. I just wanted to emphasize those and if you had any questions for me?
How many units will you plan on this point five five?
We have
Or are you able to put on there, I should say?
How many, how many am I able to put on there? I am able to put on there, let me refer to my notes so I don't mess it up. But and I left that at the hang on a sec.
I can, I can help you, I can help out a little bit. The HDR zone allows for above fifteen units per acre. If you go above, so there isn't a cap. However, there, if you go over thirty units per acre, you have to go through an extra step. You have to go through a conditional use permit, and I'm talking thirty units per acre. So it wind up being fifteen-ish at, at that point. But generally, these properties wind up being constricted by the height, landscaping and the parking requirements that they'll have to fit on a half acre.
Plus ingress and egress.
Plus ingress, egress, all that.
Right. But combined with the property with the south, we would have our ingress and egress resolved. We would no longer need an easement. Because it would be a contiguous property.
Any other questions of the applicant? Anyone online to speak or anyone in the room want to speak?
I'll check. Nobody has their hand raised.
Seeing no one online and no one in the room that wishes to speak. Chairman proposes to close testimony and open it up to Chair of Planning Commission responses or questions, comments? Logan, you're looking.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the water issue a little bit better because it does look like there's some comments from the Water District and some of it does revolve around water rights, but like Seg was saying, there's like multiple different service areas and so it's kind of hard to figure out, okay. This is in service area four apparently. So yeah, I was just trying to get a better idea of if it's a water rights issue or if it's a, if it is just a, you know, pipes in the ground issue.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Logan, they, they can't issue a permit unless they, a building permit unless they have that minimum standard being provided. So it's kind of a self-answering question.
You're right.
Any other comments or thoughts?
Do we close public testimony? All right, on that note, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend CPA, CPA eleven twenty-three to the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
Your second? Second by Melissa? Any further discussion? Call for motion? Call for vote? All those in favor of approving proposal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion passes five zero. Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Planning Director. Do you want to deal with seventeen before we have lunch concurrently with lunch or what's?
Can we, we have a silly's break and
Yeah, okay, that's
a work in lunch.
Okay.
That's adjourned for
Five minutes.
We just had fifteen and seventeen left, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
Good call.
Yeah, so I'm sorry. Now, yeah, now we can shut us off, sorry.
That's again, Ryan. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Your recommendation to the board to approve this amendment.
And I want to give a little bit more background and clarification, um, just to kind of step back. So what happened first was the county, when we were setting UGA boundaries a very long time ago, um, set UGA boundaries that the growth board later determined and the courts of appeals later determined were too big. They were oversized. So we lost in the appeal there. So what the county did to correct that was we rescinded the UGA, the resolution that expanded the UGA area, which basically shrunk it back down. However, in the interim, these two plats came in and vested those parcels to the UGAs as they existed. So once we rescinded it, those were vested to urban densities now outside of the urban growth area. And so when we went before the growth board, um, we said, okay, growth board, we're, we're back into compliance now. We shrunk our UGA area and, um, the petitioners at the time and the growth board ended up holding, um, that does not. Well, actually it was the court of appeals div two said that does not bring you back into compliance county. Now what you have is urban areas outside of the UGA, which is also not compliant with the UGA. So what we did is we entered the mediation, um, originally before it entered the mediation agreement. And one of the things the county agreed to do, and this is all public record, um, which is why I'm mentioning it, um, is provide a list of all of the vested developments outside of the urban growth area at the time. And then as part of the mediation agreement, the, the petitioners agreed and the mediation, um, people agreed that we could go ahead and bring those into the UGA and that they would not challenge that. So long as we did all the other things that were in the, the mediation agreement. These two plats did not make it in there. And that's because as Scott indicated, our administrator at the time made an administrative decision that the plats had not vested. So we didn't include them on the list because we didn't think they were vested at the time. It was not until the hearing examiner decision came out October of twenty twenty one that the hearing examiner said, no, no, they are vested. So now we went back into mediation, um, with the, the mediation folks and said, okay, um, well, they're outside of the UGA. We have to become compliant. The growth board is required that we become compliant and bring these somehow into compliance. The only way we can think of to bring them into compliance is bring them back into the UGA. And in order to do that, one of the things the mediation agreement allowed us to do was a, a land swap. So we could bring in, um, land as long as we took equal amount of land out. And then also trying to account for the fact that population, you know, a cemetery doesn't have any population allocated to it. So also trying to not expand the population unlawfully, we've done this process. Part of the mediation agreement, um, as Scott indicated, but just to clarify, one of the things proposed that was, um, hinted towards with Mickey was like Scott said, it was to still bring these in, but the trade off was take, prevent anyone else from building. That notably does not address any of Ms. Mickey's concerns that she raises today. Her solution that she proposed in the mediation would have had the same problems that she raises in her comment today. So what, what the county is trying to do is we're in, granted, we're here by our own fault, but we're in between a rock and a hard place. We can't leave them outside of the UGA or we'll be non-compliant. And so we're trying our best to bring them in and be compliant. They've already vested. They're already being built on. They will be built, period, full stop. Like we can't afford to buy the development rights. They're already being built. So the question is, how do we now bring them into the UGA without running afoul? The, the law that Ms. Mickey comments, um, refers to, and that I think, I believe future wise also refers to is the law that was newly passed this year, last year. Um, that allows, allows these swaps that it basically codifies our mediation agreement. But it has added things that you have to do under there. Um, and one of the arguments I think that's being made and commerce has, has interpreted it this way is that you can only do those swaps. You can only do those swaps when you do your comp plan, your major comp plan update every 10 years. One, I don't think that the, the folks who actually moved to, to change that law, which was Cheney, the city of Cheney, um, intended that. I will admit that, and I've said this on the record before, that the language certainly reads that way. Um, it, but, and I can read it for you that they're talking about. So it says, if during the county's review under A of this subsection, which is the tenure update, the county determines revision of the UGA is not required, then basically it says that you can swap as long as the UGA cannot result in an increase in the total surface areas of the urban growth areas, which is why we're proposing to move the cemetery out. Um, and then the areas added to the UGA are not, or have not been designated as agriculture, forest, mineral resource lands and the other things. And then less than 15% um, are critical areas and, and then so on and so forth. It's under RCW thirty six seventy A. One thirty three C. However, this is a little different, right? We're not just undertaking a UGA swap because we're saying growth trends have happened. We're trying to fix something that is already unlawful. So it's a different situation. If we don't do it, we're non-compliant. If we do do it, then maybe we offend that new law. Um, and the other thing that we have to consider is that the, the GMA also contemplates under RCW thirty six seventy A. Oh no, I just lost it. Uh, I think it is. One thirty sub two A that there is an exception when you are up to, to these, like annual amendments, which are also allowed. There's an exception where you can do that more often if one of the things you're doing it for is to resolve litigation. And so arguably, that is what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to expand it or move it just as part of regular planning. We are only undertaking this to resolve pending litigation and to cor- to correct a non-compliance and an invalid, invalidity that already exists. And we, this is the best way we know how to do it. Um, there are this, the concerns that the city has mentioned. Um, I believe their primary concerns were that, hey, this is in our water service area and our sewer service area. And our comp plan says that we're not going to provide these services or have that service area outside of the UGA. Um, it is noteworthy that water is not a, an urban service, so it can be provided. I understand that that doesn't help them with their, their conflict and their, um, their comp plan, uh, but it can be provided outside sewer cannot. And I believe that we looked and there are no, while it's in the sewer service area, there are no sewer pipes in the area that we proposed to remove. Uh, future wise's comments also hinged more on this cemetery seems to be more urban like in that it's, if you remove it from the urban growth area, it's certainly not rural because it has buildings and has statues and it has a mausoleum and different things like that. Um, but no, notably you can have cemeteries in rural areas also. And neither one of these is going to, the cemetery is not going to really allow for urban densities or rural density. So we were trying to pick a non-offensive parcel that's not going to develop into urban level density as far as, you know, homes. And not to make excuses, but you can imagine how difficult it is to find undeveloped land in the urban growth area to remove. Um, it's not easy. Um, I would also note, I think future wise had a comment that, um, Spokane County can't swap out land because it's, um, it's UGA is, is already oversized. I would note that we also took action by resolution seventeen. Or what was it? Um, a resolution in twenty twenty one, I want to say, removing eleven hundred and eighty acres um, out of the UGA, which was the Geiger spur area. So we already shrunk the UGA by that much within the last couple of years. And then we would be doing this as well to try to reduce it further. So again, just all of that, um, to go into your calculation of whether or not this should be recommended moving forward.
Be honest with you, I'm really confused now. It didn't.
Do you need a Venn diagram?
That's, that's why this is an anomaly.
I gotta see that map. I would ask the question, so what are we going to do here today?
The recommendation is that you, uh, recommend the board of county commissioners approve this amendment, approve amendment seventeen twenty three.
Obviously they've done more studying about than I have, so that's my only comment.
What do we consider the risk to the county of approval? Because obviously we've got litigants who, uh, feel that we are doing this unlawfully. And obviously we're not going to make this recommendation if our legal counsel doesn't say we think that this is with, within our legal ability.
There's a risk either way. If you, if we don't do this, we know we're non-compliant because it's currently in, it's, the case already exists. At this point, what we're doing is we're, we're, the case is pending. We've already been found non-compliant. They've already invalidated it. They, the growth board has said, take action county and become compliant. And so this is the action we're doing to come, become compliant. So at this point, what would happen is, uh, whatever this board does, it goes to the board of county commissioners. If they pass it, then we go back before the growth board and we're like, growth board, this is what we've done to become compliant. And then the parties argue over whether it's compliant. That said, someone could also file a new cause of action on this and challenge it. And then, you know, we'd have that. So again, rock hard place. But it, but not something new that we're undertaking. We're already non-compliant. So if we don't move forward with anything, we will be, there's a zero question.
Did the prior removal of, I think you said eleven thousand one hundred and eighty acres of land from the UGA that was, when we unlawfully expanded the UGA, did that bring, uh, was that a sufficient reduction to bring us within compliance for what we should have re- remained within?
So I, I think what your, your question really is, is how much, how oversized was our UGA before? I don't know the answer to that question, honestly. Um, I thought it was two thousand. It's in the mediation agreement. Um, and so the eleven eighty is a little bit under that amount. Um, so I, I don't think we would be all the way back down to where we maybe, where future wise would argue we should be. Um, but at this point, uh, we've kind of got two tracks, right? We're trying to become compliant through the mediation agreement, which is still, there's still a chance that we can become compliant through that, just doing what we need to do through that. Um, and then we're also trying to take action to show the growth board, we're trying, we're trying to become compliant, you know? If we do nothing, um, that won't work. So I.
So I get it that we're, this may not be, the actions taken have not fully rectified in terms of the, uh, UGA that was added.
Correct.
Improperly.
Yes.
So this would be a further step towards it.
Correct.
The other question I have for you is because these were vested properties, we, uh, parcels, we can't take that away because that becomes illegal taking, right?
Correct.
Okay. So yeah, that, I, I understand the rock and the hard place. I just wanted to clarify that we have potential litigation against us if we were not to do it. So we also have the threat of litigation. Uh, it's kind of weighing who has the greater, uh, uh, greatest.
Correct. And not the threat of litigation. We are in active litigation and we have to, we have to show that we have remedied the situation and specific with these, which was under the O five case. We have to show that we have remedied this express issue of having vested. Um, vested urban parcels, these specifically, that do not offend the GMA any longer. And the only way we know to do that is to bring it in, back into the UGA. I'm, I'm not aware of any other, nor has one been suggested of how else to become compliant with this exact issue of these two parcels being outside of the UGA and developing urban. Other than Ms. Mickey's suggestion, which is, well, we'll agree to, you know, to not litigate it. If you just agree to buy up all the other parcels up there and.
Are we negotiating with them or are we complying with them?
The, both. All. We are continuing to, to work with the parties. We are also, we're working on other, other routes to compliance in tandem to this. Um, but as far as like these two parcels, the, our mediation all but failed as to these two parcels and how to remedy them. We, we can't, we, there was an impasse be- between us and the Mickey folks. Um, that said, we could go into executive session for five minutes and I could also explain some more if you wish. But, um, that's all I can say on the record.
Have we exhausted legislative solution?
They're under, my understanding is the city of Cheney is going back before the legislature to further clarify that subsection. That's an issue, um, that future wise and Ms. Mickey are referenced. GA swaps in the tenure, because that doesn't make a lot of sense, right? But.
It sounds to me like it's mission impossible. And, and so if the legislature created the situation that, that is mission impossible, maybe we need to put some heat on the legislature to, to, uh. If I may, that, um, we are, we all know that is a very, I don't say risky, but a, uh, low probability of winning situation. It could take years. Uh, I, I think, I think our attorneys talking about this as carefully as we can. Our perspective is a little more simple. We are out of compliance. If we do nothing, we will look like we are not taking that seriously. If we take an action, at least we're trying something. And if we get slapped for it, we can at least defend why we did it.
Who is the recipient of what we would get slapped for?
Basically, we'd still just be found, we'd still just be found in, in, I think we'd still just be found out of compliance. And then we would be basically told to go back to the table and figure it out again, um, unfortunately, but.
Puts us right back here in a year and two years and.
And, and.
Are you the main contact on this whole thing?
For, for, I'm the attorney on the whole thing.
No, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, yes, I am the attorney.
We're getting all the information from you.
Correct.
Okay, that.
And, and there, you know, another trivial point, um, and you know, I learned this not long after I got here. We, we've been out of compliance with GMA since two thousand and five. That's a huge amount of time. Legal reads the room and says, everybody's getting tired of you being out of compliance and you're not making progress and we're going to hit you harder next time.
But we should stop right there so that we don't reveal anything further.
That's fair. What, what's, what's the fact though is be, by being out of compliance, we are ineligible to apply for grant funds that come through the public works board, which is monitored by commerce. This year's cycle came out a month or so ago, four hundred million dollars, uh, available in grant funds for communities in the state. We can't apply for that money. So when we're out of compliance, we're leaving money on the table that could go to stormwater management. It could go to water quality feature. It could go to a lot of things that would benefit people in the county. So that's why we're working so hard to get back here and, you know, I'm, I like the idea of taking at least a little more direct approach. Uh, so we can say we're trying.
What are you asking for today?
A motion?
I don't think we, I don't think we're to that point. I think let's find out, do we have public comments?
Yes.
And then, and then we can consider the motion that is recommended.
Yeah, now just a, a question as well. Um, so first of all, I appreciate staff's creativity, right? We're like trying to interpret what urban means, if that applies to cemeteries. Still not sure. I'm trying to wrap my mind around it too. And then also urban amenities or urban infrastructure. And then also we're trying to be a good neighbor to the city who borders this. And so it's, it's challenging. But I appreciate the innovative thinking to try to include this. But I guess my question is, is there another two hundred and nine acres somewhere, um, that works better or could work as well? Have we searched for it? Is, is this, is there another way to go or is this the only way to go?
If, if Sagan is going to answer this, but, um, he's been, you know, feeling my boot on the back of his head to answer that exact question for weeks.
I mean, if you can find something, you know, I would be all ears. And you know, I, I guess so. Part of the hope for the review in this is that when we send things to future wise and our other partners and planning, that maybe they, if they had something that they thought worked better, just tell, you know, tell us instead of saying, don't do it this way.
I was so hoping I was going to find that in the comments, like try this parcel instead.
Yeah.
Of course, that's not their job, but I was.
Yeah, and, and we've looked and looked. I mean, to just find the, also the population portion, I just poured over maps and just looked at ownership. You know, I mean, there's, there are, there are more refined ways to do it, but I mean, you know, there, we have done a pretty exhaustive search on this.
Those maps we showed you from the twenty sixteen LQA, um, he went over those parcel by parcel. You know, hundreds of those parcels, trying to find good candidates that had changed ownership and would no longer be residential. I'm confident we can't find, uh, you know, eighty eight acres alone, let alone two hundred and nine. The eighty eight is the key number, but we couldn't, we couldn't even find that. So we took a bigger parcel, thinking it solves two purposes. It takes a little more land out of the UGA and it balances the eighty eight acres we need.
Are you allowed to purchase land, like to, to acquire eighty eight acre, two hundred acres in the west plains? It's in light industrial and the county acquire it and then take it out?
Um, I, I guess legally, yes, but if you did that, you would forestall any, you'd be ta- you'd be buying land at light industrial prices, taking it out of a UGA, making it rural land that you would be selling for a fraction of the.
I, I appreciate.
We're holding that.
I was asking that question in light of what it costs you to not solve the problem. And we end up owning the land. It's outside the UGA, but in two years it's back inside the UGA and you made a profit. I know that's sounding like a developer, but, uh.
We're, we're attacking this, attacking this with the tools we have.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, uh, Alan's right, uh, this still is a public hearing item. Uh, you'd be welcome to open to public comment.
Oh, so let's open this for public comment.
Well, you're on. Yeah, well, you know, folks, it's, this has been a fascinating discussion or interchange to watch and to, and to listen to because, uh, it's clear that, um, as our letter said, the neighborhood alliance letter said, this, this is a legal deal. And, and there, and, um, there needs to be a pathway through it. But, um, suggestions, because I am a, I'm a petitioner, my organization is a petitioner. Uh, I cannot say that I am aware of any negotiation that founded about doing this a different way up on Five Mile. I'm encouraged that, uh, there have been statements, uh, about the fact that negotiations could continue. But, um, what you, what you've been witnessing from, uh, staff is a, a, a discussion that doesn't really conclude anywhere at your level. Frankly, uh, uh, if I were sitting in your chairs, I would entertain a motion to, uh, not rec- to, uh, forward the application to the board without a recommendation. That if I were to sit here and interpret what it, what it is that wants to happen is it needs to go forward. I don't think you, I think you, if things are ambiguous enough for the planning commission to have insufficient grounds to make any kind of a judgment about it and simply send it on to the board. So at their level, it can be dealt with and documented that way. Finally, I want to say if there, if, if there are any document, is there, if there is any documentation back about, about negotiations that, that were proposed and stopped, I would like to know what they are because I'm not aware of them. Thank you. Thank you for listening. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm glad you've, uh, you, I'm glad you've been able to see how tough a nut this is. But I guess the last thing I would say is it's, it's better for us all to move forward, but you can't do it at your level. Just simply forward it without a recommendation. Thank you very much.
Logan did bring up a good point, or he did too. Then I have a question when Kevin gets done.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Um, oh, thank you. Uh, so for those of you that don't know me, my name is Kevin Freibot. I'm the senior planner for the city of Spokane. Um, you have our letter, which, uh, addressed our concerns, um, and I fully understand the, the rock and the hard place that's been described here today. I'm, I'm, there's a small pity part of me that is, that is glad I'm not having to cut that Gordian knot for you. But, um, I do want to respond a little bit, uh, regarding the cemetery, just to kind of clarify, um, and to maybe respond to some of what, uh, the attorney has said. When we talk about the urban services in that area, it isn't just, this is a comprehensive plan. This is a long range plan. It isn't just about what is there today. There is a cemetery there today. There is a facility there today and that's fine. They're served now. They wouldn't, we wouldn't cut off their water in their sewer tomorrow. But if in 10 years' time, they want to build a second set of offices or a new columbarium with a bathroom in it. Not, not that the occupants of the columbarium would need the bathroom, but the visitors would. And if they would, if that's what they wanted and these were removed from the UGA, we would, our hands would be tied. The city of Spokane cannot, per our comprehensive plan, provide services outside of the UGA unless those services are related to a park. And as much as I agree with, uh, with Logan's assessment that cemeteries did originally provide some park space and open space. They're not classified as parks. Unless it's a park or a school, we're, our hands are tied. We're unable to serve that. And so say they were to come to you next five years from now and say, we want to build a new building, we couldn't help with that. They would have to find another water source, another sewer source. Also, um, uh, with regards to, uh, I had a second point and I think it just escaped me. So, um, I just, I think, I think what our, our main point is, is that we want to make sure that there's thought behind that decision, that there are ramifications to removing these properties from the UGA. Earlier today, I've seen several or at least a few of these proposals get forwarded on with a condition or with the idea that they be continued for discussion. Um, I would ask that you consider that as an option here, that perhaps there is more discussion to occur. I've seen a lot of it here. That, uh, maybe it isn't ready to move forward. So just a suggestion. But I do appreciate the opportunity to talk and I'm, I'm glad you were able to read our letter. So, thank you. I think I kept that under three minutes.
Thank you.
It's all right.
There you go. Thank you so much. I, I personally appreciate the comments we got. My gut tells me that we got a truck under a bridge and we need a little girl to come along and say, why don't we let some air out of the tires? And, um, I, I don't think that, that little girl is in this room, but, uh, uh, it's, it's just, I, I thought Paul's comment was, was worth considering. You know, we pass the buck to the county commissioners.
Have, have we, are we closing public comment? I'm sorry, are we, we still have public comment open, knowing?
I don't know where we are. If we have no more public comment, we should close it and go into discussion.
Yep.
Uh, seeing no one else willing to speak, I'll close public comment, open discussion.
I just want to make it known or just, there will also be another public hearing on this. The steering committee of elected officials also will be conducting a public hearing on this topic. So, um, there'll be more opportunities for public and testimony and recommendations.
Is that before or after the county commissioners?
Before.
It's next Wednesday.
Got it.
And your recommendation is just that. It's a recommendation and the board can choose to follow it or not. If they choose not to follow your recommendation and or the S CEOs, they just have to hold an additional public hearing, um, on that. But, um, it, the function of this commission is to make a recommendation. So I do not believe you have the option of just passing it on without a recommendation generally.
And in order to open the discussion, then I'll make a motion to, uh, move to that we recommend to the board of county commissioners approval of CPA twelve dash, no, that's not the right one. CPA seventeen dash twenty three.
Second, no more.
I guess I have a, I have a concern about us making a recommendation, moving it forward for something that's not legal. Like I heard what you were saying, that maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but we still got to do something. Um, and I appreciated the thought that's going into the fact, look, can, can the county acquire some property? Maybe it could be conservation futures or reserved for a future park or something like that. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Um, if it was out there, that would be kind of an easy way to go. So I just have that question about us send, making a recommendation on, on something that we don't know is established for sure. Do appreciate the rock and the hard place though, um, that we have to do something. Do appreciate the rock and the hard place, though, um, that we have to do something. Um. I think I guess that's it. That's the only thing I've got is, wow, not sure what the right move is here.
Well, since we we've got to make some sort of recommendation, uh. It's fine if we don't necessarily like the one that I'm adopting from the recommendation from the staff, but I do think we should. Get a motion that we're going to discuss. Then if we have to come up with a separate motion, so be it.
Because I'll, I'll second the motion that uh, Commissioner Nolan made just to, for the purposes of discussion. I guess I'll follow up with a question, so. It sounds like. Actually, I'm in, I'm in.
So where are we?
So we've got a motion, I know we're in discussion and uh, I, I'm gonna piggyback on what you've said. Commissioner Rayner, I I do think that the. That as part of this recommendation, that. There should probably be discussion of other options. I do think that. In terms of fiscally, it just might make more sense to go out there and buy land. Even knowing that it it's, it's going to be downgraded. That may be a more appropriate decision for the taxpayers. That's a Board of County Commissioners and a a financial type of decision. And obviously, the legal council is going to be involved in that. It's like, well, what is our, what's our downside risk? And that's not an easy one to assess. It's separate. Even if it is germane to our discussion, I think that we can. Make that as a point, a uh, a comment in, as part of our recommendation that this is perhaps another option that should be considered. Uh, on the specific recommendation, I do think that. I take counsel's position that it shows that we are attempting action. I think that that's important for us to move towards. Uh, the being in G M A compliance, and it's also important part of that financial consideration, and that we talked about four hundred million dollars for the grant money available that we, we cannot. We can't even apply for. So is our ability to apply for that? Is that offset by, you know, potential legal fees if we end up having to be, having to fight this because. There's the argument made that this is an illegal action. I look at the letter from. Futurewise, and I think it's a bit disingenuous. I think it's a. That it's uh, manipulating language in that. Trying to identify that as structures. I mean, if you really wanted to, you could certainly go out there and grow crops in the middle of the cemetery. I'm not sure I'm necessarily going to buy that at a farmer's market. I don't know if that'd be a popular item, but it's certainly, it uh, you you could make the argument as well as you could start mining. In between the uh, the sites. So I think that. If you want to play games with language, there are, there's a lot of that. And I I also have the concern that it's the Growth Management Act. And I forget which letter specifically mentioned or which uh, resource, but. I think both of the cemeteries were dated back into the eighteen hundreds in terms of when they were. So this is not. This is not new, this is not growth, this is existing. We're just, it's uh, it's kind of like with language where, hey, we have grammar rules, but actually it's just, we're kind of, kind of. Trying to capture what we're already doing because it's already there. And it's the exact same thing in this case. It's an existing. Use and now we're trying to go, well, it kind of fits in this category. We're going to call it that. It certainly is not the intent of Growth Management Act, the. The idea behind that was managing the growth for new population. Uh, this is an existing use. It's not ever, it's not likely to ever support population. And I do think that this is an appropriate and reasonable. Action for the county to take in order to try and uh, become compliant. Respect the rights of vested landowners.
Okay, now I'll ask a couple of questions. Um, no, you're good. No, I didn't even, I just decided not to ask them. I got too many. Um. Does the cemetery, did did they have any comment on this? Do what are, do they care? Do they know? I mean, they have sued, they've received some kind of public notice, but they didn't provide any comment.
As far as I know, that the, the cemetery has not. Made comment or. They have also not been individually notified from us. Um, I think that at this. Phase of the process, we're also just capturing. The thoughts and responses of agencies to, to understand how this is being felt out from the public.
All right, and then just maybe more of a question for Jessica, but is there a middle ground here? It sounds like maybe we can't do as Pete suggested and just punt to the county commissioners. If we continued it, then does it not even go to the county commissioners or it does, right? Because all of our continuous recommendations go to them. Is that a middle ground that we could find? Maybe they kind of say this is above us, take this from us?
You could continue this to the next Planning Commission meeting, um, especially because this can be taken out of order. Um, because it's pending litigation. So you, I don't know. You meet in November?
We, we are looking to. Add a November meeting for other reasons.
Yeah, so you could certainly continue it with direction to staff to look at other um, parcels possibly, which might solve that issue. And then you also have the benefit, if you do that, of knowing what the S C E O decided in the interim.
And that's the Steering Committee that's.
Correct.
And they're going to be weighing similar considerations to the considerations that we're trying to weigh right now.
Pretty much the exact same.
And there will be folks from the city and the county and other.
Correct, all of the elected officials, yep.
I guess my inclination is to do that right now, um. But I'm open.
Good discussion.
Mr. Chair, if that's the case, you would need to move an amended amendment to the original motion.
But what are, what are you guys feelings? I mean, are you willing to? Uh, do you want to move this forward? I I would prefer us give the county commissioners the opportunity to. Say yes or no. I think that this is an appropriate solution path to attempt. And uh, we can certainly have others that disagree with it. Us and disagree with us through litigation. That's their right. Uh, I do think that we're probably better served. Giving the county commissioners the opportunity to decide, do they want to take that risk? Because there's risk on either of those decisions.
And I would note that neither, neither option of finding different parcels or purchasing would solve the problems raised by Ms. Mickey and Futurewise. Which is simply that you, you just cannot do this until the twenty twenty-six update. So finding different parcels and and buying a parcel may remedy the city's concerns, which it sounds like we're a little ameliorated here. Um, but. It wouldn't remedy the arguments raised, well, Futurewise's arguments maybe with respect to um, the cemetery being urban, but not the. Fact that the G M A language seems to suggest you can only do it once every ten years. So.
Yeah, I guess Commissioner Nolan, my inclination is that we try to do something too. Um, not a non-action doesn't seem like a reasonable option to me. But I also hear Paul and Pete saying like, maybe this is above our level, but again, we're here to make recommendations. This is. Uh, in our purview, so yeah, I mean. I think we should do something, whether that's continue and see what the Steering Committee does, or just, just go ahead and and push it forward. Honestly, that'd probably be a yes vote for either of those options.
If I'm hearing correctly. We're asking for somebody to play Solomon. And and I think we've got two or three different options that are Solomon-esque. Sounds like we look at a continuation, we look at. Forwarding it with no decision or no recommendation, county commissioners.
I don't think you can do the no recommendation. There has to be a recommendation.
Okay, so we we're under an obligation based off of the lawsuit and the settlement for the lawsuit to act. But the legal, uh, the change in R C Ws, that occurred after, correct? So we had a mandate placed on us that is now it pinged on by the legislature. I can't lose to maybe conflict. Yes, no?
Yes and no. I mean, the law always existed that. How you set your U G A is how you set your U G A. We violated that. Ours was too wide or too big. And so when we reduced it. And someone vested, that didn't correct it. Subsequently, the legislature now has amended that law so that that can't happen, which is actually helpful to jurisdictions. But so. And then when they created this correction or this U G A swap ability, it it had nothing to do with contemplation of how you would fix pending litigation. So, but yes, that came in after our litigation and after we had been found noncompliant. However, it exists today, so it exists before you are taking action. So we were technically bound to it. The argument is just, does the other section of the G M A that says you can amend um. Amend your comp plan more than once per year, and you can amend it once per year. Does that? Is that an exception to this section that says you can only do these every ten years? And that's unclear. And that's where we're stuck.
If I could interject. Mr. Hossi and maybe more of our members have a hard stop pretty quick.
And we have one more amendment that we have to do today.
Which one's that?
The concurrency analysis.
The who?
Chapter three. That's the, that's the statement of concurrency.
We don't have anything in paperwork.
It's. Uh, the concurrency report was posted in your folders. I mean, well, if we, if we're resolved that the other, you know, one thing to consider is. Uh. If the commission takes an action today. When the Steering Committee said, what did the Planning Commission do? We will be able to report that action. If that action is the, this Planning Commission decided to see what you were going to do first, uh, we were kind of throwing it in their hands too.
Yeah, I would, I would say let's at least address the, let's call a question and let's address the motion on the table.
What is the motion on the table to recommend approval? We have a second?
We did.
Close discussion. All those in favor, motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes, five zero.
There you go. That's, that's good advice.
Last piece, I think we could handle very quickly. Soon as. Ella puts down her third hand while she's writing these five things. It is the result of what we talked about before we started the comp plan amendments, which is these, this new approach to determining the. Composite or comprehensive impact through concurrency analysis. And that was done by staff uh, on a massive scale this year in conjunction with the capital facilities plan to be able to balance these things in place. It's a uh, you know, twenty page report or so, if if you haven't looked at it. In the past, what we have done is there's been one table at the back of the comp plan amendments that said this. This many new people, it'll have this many gallons of new water and so on and so forth, the different. This now balances that demand with the supply and the capacity over a period of time. And so it allows us to say unequivocally that the, the county can afford these comprehensive plans because there's a net surplus of. Our ability to serve uh, if they are all adopted together.
And if I understand, that was done because the way we were doing it before, that was not sufficient, and I thought it looked like a pretty nice product, personally.
It, we, we were not necessarily challenged on that, but as we did the capital facilities planning, we saw how deficient that was. Because all we were talking about is what's the new demand, rather than what's the new, new demand at this point in time and can we afford it? And so it it really fully aligns the CPA process with the capital facilities plan. And so we'd be simply asking for you to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the uh, cum- cumulative impact assessment.
So moved. Also, just say briefly, I, I, oh, do we need to have um, public comment on this? Sorry, my fault. I think we can still do that.
Hey, just so we don't forget, I think we also have to prove minutes.
It's open, yeah.
Yes, again. My, my address is in the record. Uh, Commissioners, go for this one. It's really good.
Thank you, Paul.
I will just echo um, Commissioner Nolan's um. Comments that this is like pretty comprehensive document, appreciate the maps and the numbers to try to. Turn some things that don't always seem no miracle into um, hard numbers. And so I appreciate that. I think this is a good format that. We can continue to improve on, but I think it provides um, a really good baseline and shows that we're looking at things holistically and meaningfully.
I've been reminded, do we have any other public comment on this matter? None? Okay. Public comment is closed.
We already have a motion and a second on the table. I don't think we need to make it again, do we? Okay. Call for the vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
And and I hate to do this to you, but before you take the minutes, you'll need one more motion because we don't have findings of fact today. So the motion would be to direct staff to draft findings of fact. Consistent with today's hearing to be executed at other than an open public hearing.
So moved.
Is your second? I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, oh, you'll want to open it to public testimony because we didn't put that on the agenda.
So open for public testimony?
Well, do you have testimony on the findings of fact?
Only that uh, from the public's point of view, uh, what is being requested was spoken so quickly. That some of us could not understand it.
I will repeat it slower. It was a motion to direct staff. To draft findings of fact consistent with today's hearing to be executed at other than an open public hearing.
And we're open for public comment on that motion.
There's no one else. You can.
Paul, you have nothing, then we'll close public comment.
I think we already have a motion in a second.
Already have a motion. Have a second? Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passed unanimously. Did we do that one right?
Go for your, you can do your minutes and thirty seconds probably.
I make a motion to approve the minute, de-draft minutes presented.
Uh, I reviewed the minutes too, and I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Passed unanimously. Staff report.
Uh, thank you. I think we're done. I think we're done for enough today. No.
Any.
Thank you, Commissioners.
From the staff.
The staff has reported. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have one thing I wanted to say before I adjourn. Um, Scott used some words that were Greek to me. Form-based zoning. And. I kept hearing about missing middle, and so I got the book. And I learned what form-based zoning was, and I just, I I'm sure our planners know, but I don't know that the rest of us do, but. I I think you threatened us with the fact that we're going to be dealing with that as we put the comp plan together.
We're going to consider that as a new.
Anyway, I just, I I had to get this on Amway or on uh, Amazon, but uh. It, it was, it was an easy read and it made a lot of sense, which is unusual for textbooks.
What was the, who was the author?
The author is Daniel Paralek.
Thank you.
So anyway, any other comments?
Thanks, Commissioners.
Move, move for adjournment?
Second.
Re-adjourn. Good job, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there, guys.